Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, and if you could please recite our statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 28 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per off-agenda, agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during the Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make an in-person, comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda, off-agenda item, and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please rise and join DSP Executive Director Michael Alt in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughter)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Again, I would like to welcome everyone to today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Again, as a friendly reminder, we certainly welcome any one that has joined us here in chambers to address the Board on any matter that is on our printed and posted agenda, or any item that is not. We ask that you please keep your comments to no more than two minutes. That way, everyone has an opportunity to address the Board if they so choose. So with that, Madam Clerk, our first item.
First item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. We have one speaker signed up. That is Larry Leroy Ladd.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Serna. My name is Larry Leroy Ladd. I'm one of the founders of the city of Ranch, Cordova. But I'm not wearing my Ranch, Cordova hat. I'm wearing my hat as a volunteer researcher for the USCPA-sponsored community advisory group for Aerojet Superfund side issues. And I want to issue an invitation to any of your supervisor staffers or the county executive anywhere in the county, if they want to get together and get briefed, if they want to geek out on the toxicology of the identified contaminants of Aerojet, because they're all becoming national issues now. They're getting revived. And there's a lot of messaging on tricorallethylene and NDMA with the Sandtac trials, and even perchlorate with measles out in Texas. So, you know, on messaging, they refer to movies or something like that. And I've been to Woburn with leukemia, and I've been to outside Indianapolis where they were fussing about TCE, and it's really complicated. So I'm issuing the invitation to, if there's any staffer who wants to chit-chat about that, I'll meet with them at any time. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you for the invitation. All right, does that conclude our public testimony on matters not on the agenda?
That does.
Okay, little house thing here. We are going to, in light of the limited number of public speakers on off-agenda, I think be prudent to take consent at this time, assuming we don't have a long list of speakers for consent signed up. Okay, very good. So let's do that. And if there's no objections from the, my colleagues, then I think that'll make the best use of our time this morning.
If there are no items to pull, I will move consent items three through 28.
Okay. It's been moving to second. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak. I do have clerk notes just for item number nine, which is an intro of an ordinance amending Chapter 16.140.3 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the technology cost recovery fees. We're waiving full reading and continuing to April 8 for adoption.
Okay. That concludes your remarks on consent.
That concludes my remarks. That's correct.
Very good. All right, then we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
All right, very good. We will then take our appointments.
For our boards and commissions, the Board is to consider nominations, and we are continuing to the meeting of April 8, 2025, the Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, continuing to April 22, 2025, the Cemetery Advisory Committee, Children's Coalition, Disability Advisory Commission, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, continuing to May the 13, 2025, the Kasumnas Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Board, and Atomas Community Planning Advisory Council. That brings us to this morning's item. We are looking at accepting nominations for the Adult and Aging Commission. There are 10 seats available. Chair Serna?
Yes, Chiefs are recommending the nomination of Solomon Chiss, Harrison Linder, Catherine Cosse, and then please continue the remainder to April 22.
Thank you. And Supervisor Rodriguez, for the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, we have six seats.
Please continue this to April 8.
Thank you. For the Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Supervisor Desmond, there is one seat for your district.
Please appoint John Oldham Jr. and waive process.
Second.
Thank you. And that item does pass unanimously. And Supervisor Rodriguez, I show that you also have one seat.
Oh, please continue to April 22.
Thank you. For the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Desmond, you have five seats.
Please nominate James Crowley and continue the rest to April 22.
Thank you. For the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Chair Serna, there are six seats available.
Chiefs are recommending the nomination of Aubrey Budeli, and please continue the rest to April 22.
Thank you. Chair Serna, also for the Public Health Advisory Board, there are three community member seats.
Please continue to May 13.
Thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez, for the Rio Linda-Alvera Community Planning Advisory Council, there are two District Four nominations.
Please continue to April 8.
Thank you. And lastly, for the Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Serna, for District One, you have one seat available.
Please reappoint Justin Hang and waive the process.
Second.
And that item does pass unanimously. Supervisor Kennedy, I show you have one seat available for District Two.
Yes, please nominate El Brzowski.
Thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one seat for District Four.
Please continue to April 8.
And Supervisor Hume, one seat for District Five.
Please continue to April 22.
That concludes our Boards and Commissions' nominations and appointments.
All right, very good. All right, we have some time, so we will recess until 10:15 to take up presentations.
Thank you.
I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Thank you. Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
All right, very good.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 10 is a presentation of resolution honoring Photography Month Sacramento for Outstanding Contributions to the Arts and Culture in Sacramento County.
(inaudible).
Well, good morning, colleagues and members of the public that have joined us here this morning. For me personally, this is a very exciting part of our business today. This is a resolution honoring Photography Month in Sacramento for outstanding contributions to the arts and culture in Sacramento County. I'm joined by Roberta McClellan, who is the Executive Director of Viewpoint Photographic Art Center here in Midtown Sacramento. And I'm a proud member of Viewpoint and have had the honor and privilege of having some of my work displayed at their gallery. But I think many of you are well aware of my personal passion for this art medium. And in fact, I was with a few of you this past weekend where I took an excess of about 3,500 photos at the California Capitol Air Show, way too many photos. In fact, my left arm is sore from hoisting a fairly heavy, long lens. But I wanted to make sure that I was here this morning to, and joining Roberta. This is a fantastic way, in the month of April, to highlight the medium of photography, not just as it relates to the gallery, but to all photographers and aspiring photographers, especially our youth here in the Sacramento region. And while Viewpoint is a noted gallery space where photos are shared, and certainly workshops are held, and there's all kinds of other services that Viewpoint offers local hobbyist photographers, but also professional photographers. But it's really the education part that inspires me to be here today to present the resolution. We are, and certainly Roberta can share with you in greater detail, but we are going to be seeing even some public acknowledgement of April as being Photography Month. But we wanted to kick things off this morning with the resolution in anticipation of the new month coming up just next week. I won't read all the whereas's or the resolve, but be assured that we tried to capture in the verbiage here what the month means. And with that, I'd like to present this to Roberta, and then offer her the microphone. And for our photographers, you're welcome to come up to the stairwell, because we're going to be facing that way, so you can get that in the background.
Aha, good call. Photographer's perspective.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Phil. This is fantastic. Thank you very much. This is a real honor, and I'm not sure how many of you have heard of Photography Month. We started it back in 2018, and then a thing called COVID hit, so that shut us down pretty hard. But we pivoted and turned it all online. Photography Month was created, it's a grassroots program. The idea was to reach out to our community, our galleries, our businesses, our museums, our schools, to encourage them to celebrate the art of photography, and also our photographic artists, many of whom are right here in our county. This is the most robust offering of the Photography Month programming is right here in Sacramento County. And it is just a, amazes me every year when I see how many people come forward with their artwork, their creativity, their ideas, their enthusiasm. And one of the things that Phil mentioned, the educational component, every year, Viewpoint does a student exhibit. It's an open call. This year, finally, we're building some tremendous momentum here. We had over 100 students apply from throughout the county, so it's really exciting. The Crocker Art Museum is our partner in this. I also wanted to do a shout-out to Sacramento 365 and Visit Sacramento for providing us with the online calendar services that highlight all of the events that are occurring. And if you go to photographymonth sacramento.org, you can learn all about Photography Month and all of the events that'll be happening throughout the month of April. So, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Phil. Supervisor Serna, this is a great honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. I assume we don't have any other public speakers on the matter?
We do not.
Okay, very good. All right, next item, please.
Our next item is at 10:30, and so we would need to take a recess, but we can also do our own ranks appointments if you'd like to do that at this time.
Sure.
So item number 38 is the Board of Supervisors 2025 Appointments from Own Ranks to Sacramento County Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Cabinet. We are looking for a nomination and appointment for the ex officio Board of Supervisors members currently seated as incumbent is yourself.
I would be happy to continue serving on the DEI Committee. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
I hope you'll have something to do.
Yes, we've been busy, so.
And that does pass unanimously.
But I share your concern. Okay, so that concludes Own Ranks?
That is correct.
Okay, then we will stand in recess for eight minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here. Next item, please.
Item number 33 is PLMP 2024-00229, 2030 General Plan Annual Report for Calendar Year 2024.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Jacob Dahl. I'm a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm going to be talking about the 2024 General Plan Annual Report today. So as a very, very brief reminder, planning compiles the annual progress report on our ongoing general plan implementation on an annual basis. So we come around this time of year, present here to the Board, and then we kick it up to the state by their deadlines. So with that, let's go ahead and just dive in with some of our major projects and programs that we focused on in 2024. So first and foremost, the CAP. So the CAP was, after many years of hard work, was adopted in November 2024. And with that, the kind of real work now begins here in 2025. So the County Executive Office met earlier this year to have a kickoff meeting for CAP implementation, start working out which departments are going to do what, figuring out how monitoring is going to work and all that. So CAP implementation's going to kick off kind of in earnest now here in 2025. For the EJ element, we continued our implementation and our stakeholder outreach, especially through our annual stakeholder meeting 2024. But I wanted to highlight that the county applied and was successfully awarded CACOG's Engage, Empower, Implement, or EEI grant last year. So this is a grant where we partner with a local CBO. It's going to let us do, allow us to do a lot more robust and in-depth engagement in the North Highlands EJ community, so we're very excited about Moving on to infill. So the Board last year, early last year, had an infill workshop where a lot of different ideas were discussed on how to spur infill and housing development in the county. That turned into a resolution of intention, and then an actual adopted infill program in 2024. In furtherance of those efforts and some of the directives that came out of those, the county applied and was successfully awarded the Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing, the Pro Housing Grant, from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. So the county was awarded about $2.7 million, and those are going to go towards several infill and housing-related efforts, including infrastructure studies and land use plan updates for the Stockton Boulevard and North Watt Avenue commercial corridors. We're going to be looking at adaptive reuse, so commercial to residential conversions, and then furthering housing streamlining in our different SPAs. Moving on to housing element implementation. So 2024 was the fourth year of the current housing element cycle, and we successfully completed several housing element programs in 2024. So that includes the county-wide rezone, the infill program update, as I just mentioned, and then also the farmworker housing and supportive living ordinance amendments. So those were all identified housing element programs in our action plan. Also in 2024, we received five new capital A affordable housing project submittals. And so those projects altogether total about 265 residential units, 235 of which are deed restricted for low to very low-income residents and families. So we're very excited about keeping those moving through the process and then getting those built out here very soon. This table here shows our, kind of our progress on meeting our, you know, state-allocated regional housing needs allocation. So this past year, in 2024, we issued residential permits for just under 1,200 residential units.
Can I interrupt here?
Of course.
What can you share about how the numbers on the far-right column have changed relative to each other over the past several years? I think most folks that are perhaps unfamiliar with the RENA process and RENA mandate may assume that it is all about seeing that below-market-rate housing, everything below, above moderate, or below moderate is what's desperately needed. This tells us the story that above moderate as a category is, got the highest remaining RENA need.
Yeah, so I'm sorry if you could rephrase the question. So the, on, that the remaining RENA, that the highest is still in our above moderate?
Right. Some may find that surprising. So what can you tell us, like, say, just, maybe even just anecdotally, over the last decade, have those numbers for above moderate specifically gone up proportional to the other categories?
Um, I don't know for necessarily proportionality.
But I'm nodding yes in the gallery.
Yeah, I'm curious. Is that a yes? Okay.
All right. So our experts in the subject are confirming that what I suspected, and I just would just point that out, because there rightfully is a lot of focus, of course, on affordable housing and the various categories that comprise what we generally consider to be affordable, moderate-low, very-low, extremely-low even, that's not on here. But I would just point out, too, that our housing crisis really is not playing favorites here. It's all a crisis, including the fact that we have shortages for above-moderate housing as well. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Hi, good morning. So as I was listening to Chair Serna, and you can see that the above-moderate is on, is on, it gets doing well. But the very low is that 30% AMI. Is that correct?
Very low? I believe, yeah, I believe so.
Which, which, just for clarity, is some of our greatest needs throughout the county.
Yeah, I think I'll add that a lot of the numbers we see come in come from build-out of projects that were previously entitled. And so a lot of the reforms that the county has made have kind of been within this cycle. That's kind of what our housing, all of our housing element programs have been focused on as well. And so it often, you know, it could take a couple of years for those extremely low, those very low units to come in. So like I just mentioned, we received, you know, five new submit, projects this year, which propose, you know, over 200 units in that very low to extremely, very low income level. So that's, you know, that's on triple the units that we've had so far that we're potentially going to see within the next one to two years. And we have even more affordable projects that have been recently entitled or still going through the process, you know, proposed in previous years. So I think as we move kind of through this housing element cycle, those numbers are going to go up. We're getting more and more projects coming in, the reforms, these, these housing element programs that we've, that the Board has adopted are kind of going to affect. I think we're going to start to see those numbers increase.
For the very low.
For the very low, yeah. That's what we've been seeing. And it's kind of some of our more recent submittals within the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond. Thank you. And do these include the numbers for the project home key conversions?
I believe, do these, Nathan Alakas will tend to do, I believe they do. We just don't go through our normal submittals, right? The project home key. Yeah, the building, yeah, because they still receive the building permits. That's what these numbers are based on, our issued building permits. Home keys are just kind of exempt from our entitlement and SEQA process, but they still, I believe, these include our home, the home key conversions.
Okay, I'm going to get confirmation of that, because I was under the, oh, they do. Okay, see, Todd, it's a good question. Okay, thank you.
I will also just take this time, this interruption in your presentation, to just remind everyone, because we did receive some correspondence, I think we all did yesterday, which have, you know, tends to happen every time that we're considering our RENA needs, that there's a presumption that we build housing in the county. We don't build housing in the county. And the RENA exercise, state requirement, is identifying sites and appropriate zoning, appropriate densities, essentially making sure that we live up to our responsibility to be prepared to accommodate housing at these various income levels. But when advocacy letters begin with, "We are falling, fall short in our production of housing," again, it just, I think, warrants a bit of a disclaimer that, and reminder that the county itself, cities themselves, they don't produce the housing. Our housing authority certainly has that responsibility, and certainly the nonprofit below-market-rate housing industry and the, and the market-rate housing industry are the parties that actually produce the housing, make the investments, and that ultimately, and hopefully, affect lower housing needs across all income categories in the future. But I think, again, it deserves mentioning that we're not in the business of actually constructing, producing the housing.
And if I may add, Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive, your Board's done a lot over the last couple of years to facilitate all types of housing. And as you've noted, you know, that we've, I think we're trending in the right way on most of these categories, but there's still a lot we could, you know, be improving upon, really as a whole. Again, the county's role, and the Boards in particular, rezoning properties, you know, your Board did rezone a whole host of properties this last year to accommodate more affordable housing and housing of all types. There's a Phase Two to that project coming to your Board in the next year or two as well, that will contemplate rezoning even more sites. But we do have a surplus right now, so there are adequate sites within the county to develop upon. But as you had mentioned, the county's not in the business of actually building things, but we are very much in the business of making it easy to build here. And your Board's done a lot over the last couple of years to do just that. And as mentioned earlier, we're going to be coming back with a suite of proposed zoning code amendments along that line as well, per direction we got from your Board last spring, to again, become the best place to build in the region. I think we've made a ton of progress over the last couple of years to that effect. But there's always more we can do, and continuous improvement is one of our mantras, and we're going to be doing just that.
Thank you, Dave, for that reminder. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And I was going to mention, talk about some of these things at the end, but it seems most appropriate here. So I appreciate you bringing those points up, because I think it's a matter of the county removing those obstacles that you're referring to, Dave, and controlling the things that we can control, but there are only so many things we can't control. And, and some of the costs of things, whether that's mostly the infrastructure-related costs, that's where we work and go after grants to try to help with some of these things as well. So I really appreciate the work you're doing, the amount of attention that we're showing to this. One thing that would be helpful to me, and I was thinking about this as I was reading the, looking at this chart in particular, do you have a sense, and maybe get back to me, get back to us at some point, about how we compare with other jurisdictions, similar to the situation? situated jurisdictions, counties or cities, I mean, most counties aren't like us, I know that, with the unincorporated area. But I think that would be really, really hopeful to see where we are in relation to other municipalities.
And just for clarification, is that relative to RENA-related progress or more generally?
I think RENA, relevant to this slide, would be very hopeful for me, I think, to see. And to the extent we may, there may be a big divergence between us and different jurisdiction, a little bit of context, why that is, why we're doing better, or why we're maybe facing some additional obstacles.
Yeah, and we're happy to put that together. I'll say anecdotally, I know a lot of jurisdictions are looking at charts just like that.
And they're saying, why can't we do things better like Sacramento County?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Dave, for the information. So you mentioned we have zone locations for this housing, so, and we have a major shortage of housing currently right now for all levels of affordable housing. So is the shortfall in that we don't have developers that are ready to take on some of this housing? Is that where the bottleneck is?
That's a really big question. I'll give you at least my, my sense of things. We've spent the last, gosh, at least decade, master planning some very large areas. Those areas are now on the precipice of developing. So Brayden, for example, next to Rancho Cordova, I was working on that project over 15 years ago. We're now doing mass grading out there, right? The Jackson Highway master plan areas, three of the four there are now approved master plans, and the fourth is coming to your board in a couple of months for consideration. So we've spent a lot of time working on the nuts and bolts at the master planning level, and only now are we seeing them start to actually go vertical. So I think that's been one of the big constraints we see just across the region, a lack of finished lots. To go from, you know, the master planning phase to finished lots where the production home builders are able to purchase lots and actually building and build on them, takes many years, oftentimes decades to accomplish. And region-wide, we just have a dearth of those finished lots, and that's primarily on the single family front. On the multi-family front, we do have now a lot of adequately zoned sites, which is typically RD 30 and above, so 30 dwelling units to the acre, because your board approved a lot of rezones this past year, and more are going to be proposed in the future. You know, really, it's difficult to pull some of these projects off, especially in infill areas, it's expensive, especially when you're looking at infrastructure deficiencies, whether that be sewer, water, roadways, et cetera. So that's one of our focus points moving forward this next year, is hiring an infill coordinator and working on knocking down some of those barriers. I think we've done a lot of really good planning in those areas, but now we're really digging into what are the true constraints that are in the way of making those areas actually pop, and figuring out ways to eliminate those barriers. How do we actually address that sewer constraint, that water constraint, so the next developer that comes in doesn't have to be shouldering the entire burden of fixing a sewer constraint that affects a two-mile stretch, right? But having a program in place to make sure that we can be addressing those more holistically, so they're not on the shoulders of individual projects when they come in.
Thank you, and you're referring to just general housing, correct?
Yes, yes.
So my question is more related to the affordable housing, the low income. If we have zoned locations, is the shortfall that we don't have enough affordable housing developers to take on these projects, or is it on the funding side?
Yeah, we have, we have an excellent cadre of affordable housing developers in this region. I don't think there's a shortage of experienced developers, I think the constraint is funding. You know, in particular, those 9% tax credits, you know, affordable housing financing is an incredibly complicated beast and very, very competitive. So if there were more money available, I'm sure you'd be seeing more units pop out of the ground, but it is a very competitive landscape for those dollars.
Yeah, that's definitely what I am experiencing as I look into the, the building of affordable housing, as, I mean, it's, the shortage is, it's crisis level, and yeah, it's definitely a pain point. Thank you.
Thank you. You probably want to get along with your presentation.
Sounds good, sounds good. Okay, where are we at? Implementation Measure Status Report, yes. Okay, so this slide here, I guess I'll do a reminder, due to the size of our general plan, and I think we leave have over 600 implementation measures, we're not able to kind of do kind of annual check-in on every single implementation measure every year. So we break them out and we review one element per year and, you know, show if they've been completed, some progress is made or not started, and that's what the slide shows here, it's kind of a point in time of when each of those elements have been reviewed. So, so far, we've completed over a third of the implementation measures we reviewed, the remaining are either not started, they're either ongoing, or some progress has been made, or they're no longer relevant or applicable. So this year, we reviewed the air quality element, and so I just wanted to give a few highlights that we found from that review. So first off, of course, is the cap, so the cap is going to serve as our greenhouse gas reduction plan, which is one of the measures identified in the air quality element. We are developing air quality management plans on a project-by-project basis, so the element kind of alludes to having a countywide management plan, but after staff kind of reviewed and then also working with the air quality management district, determined that kind of the best approach is really to do this on an individual project-by-project basis, so you kind of get the, the kind of individual mitigation that you need, that the project, you know, requires, allow staff and the developer kind of more flexibility. So that's been a big, big achievement, and we do do those plans as needed. And then lastly, here, I wanted to highlight, actually, the work of the Department of General Services and the work they've done to kind of green our fleet. So Sacramento County is actually ranked one of the top 20 greenest fleets in America by the National Association of Fleet Administrators, and has actually reached the number, number one spot on that list in 2018. So the county has over 700 hybrid vehicles, over 30 fully-electric vehicles, and four hydrogen vehicles, and over 60% of the county's fleet, fleet's total fuel consumption comes from alternative and renewable fuels. So they've been doing a lot of great work to kind of lead in kind of making sure our fleet is, you know, kind of is carbon neutral and reducing our, our emissions as much as possible. So I wanted to highlight that here, as that also was an implementation measure in the element. Okay, so on to growth strategy, so kind of back on to housing a little bit, but the, the county general plan identifies various growth strategies for where we're going to kind of put our resources and how we're going to grow our housing in our, in our population. So it's infill, which is vacant, underutilized parcels, and our commercial corridors, our approved growth areas, so these are largely like our greenfield areas, and then our pending master plans. So in 2024, well, for infill, and we've already kind of spoken a little bit about some of the work we've done there, so I don't want to go over all of that again, but all of that work is going towards this infill growth strategy that's in the general plan. Our growth areas, so that's still kind of where we're seeing the, I guess, the plurality of our development, and a lot of the development is in the Vineyard area, so we are tracking build-out of a few specific plan areas there in Vineyard. You can see their remaining capacity on the slide. And then we also have our pending master plans, which I'll cover in a couple slides. All right, so this table here is our approved growth areas, so those greenfield areas, so this is getting to kind of what Dave was saying earlier, in that we have done a lot of the planning work, so these are all plan areas that have been fully entitled and approved, and, you know, kind of units just kind of waiting to be built once we work through all the rest of the development process. So these are units kind of coming down the line, just when, when they're ready to go. And then lastly, here, we have our pending master plans. So these plans are still in, being processed by planning, they're going through, you know, various stages, but these are proposed units, once these, you know, master plans are approved, these are potential units that we will be adding to the county. This slide is updated year-to-year, you know, based on how the plans are refined. So again, these are pending. Okay, zoning code updates. So if you remember back in 2022, the board had a workshop discussing kind of planning's workload and prioritizing various zoning code amendments and requests that they received. Since that workshop, planning has completed five zoning code updates, made significant progress on five more, and recently initiated additional six. So a lot of work coming out of our zoning administration team to kind of monitor, you know, continue to update our code and make improvements there. So a full list of that, an updated kind of priority matrix is included in the agenda packet, as well as a list of SPAs and NPAs currently being considered for review, revision, and/or potential resission. So those are, we're kind of finally taking that magnifying glass, look at all those SPAs and NPAs, triaging them out, and then going to be making amendments based on what's needed there. Okay, so almost done. So going on for the work program for this year. So we've kind of bucketed our five priorities here, and so I'm going to give a little bit, just a very brief overview of the work we're proposing for each of these. So capital implementation, so as I mentioned before, this is the first full year of our implementation of the cap, so we're going to be kind of working on all the kinks and then prioritizing a variety of implementation measures in order to meet the state's GHD reduction targets. For the housing element, there's four housing element programs that we're going to continue work on in 2025. So as I mentioned just now, we're going to be looking at updating or rescinding those SPAs and NPAs, and that also includes our affordable housing ordinance amendment. So we're in the very, very early stages of that effort, we're kind of in the data collection phase, but we're looking to probably start our community outreach, feedback here within the next couple of months, and then we're going to be coming to, to the board here for a workshop to kind of reveal our findings, share the feedback we received, and then hope to get some policy direction from, from the board. For infill, we've been talking about infill already, but I'll just say it here again, through that Pro Housing Grant, we're going to be expanding the scope of our work on North Watt and Stockton to include infrastructure assessments, and hopefully maybe even come out with maybe specialized capital improvement plans for those areas, and then also look at land use revisions for those, those planning documents. Planning is also going to be working on several infill-related zoning code amendments, as Dave mentioned, like looking at, you know, again, the adaptive reuse ordinance, and then also looking at our commercial and multifamily development standards, see what we can change there to spur development. For EJ, staff's going to continue to conduct our working groups, do our trainings here with county staff, and then have our annual stakeholder meeting, and then, as mentioned earlier, we're going to be implementing the EEI grant, so we're going to be kind of getting our, our boots on the ground in North Highlands to kind of do a lot more meaningful engagement out there. And then lastly on here is our general plan legislative updates. So the state has passed a myriad of bills in the past couple of years requiring various changes to our general plan elements, and so this year, we're going to be probably taking a closer look at the open space and the circulation elements in the bills related to those. So there's going to be more forthcoming on those two efforts here later this year. One last thing I wanted to mention before we move on to recommendations is that the 2030 planning horizon for the current general plan is now only five years away, and we are due for a general plan update. The community development fee study is currently in progress, and long-range planning fees is of course a part of that, and we're looking to update those fees, but those fees alone are likely not going to be able to fund that effort, and so additional either general, general fund allocation or grant funding is going to be needed if we're going to be able to do a full general plan update. Okay, recommendations. So staff recommend the board receive and file the 2024 annual report, direct staff to submit the annual report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or Land Use and Climate Innovation, or whatever they're calling themselves now, and the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And then also to direct staff to proceed with the implementation of the general plan and to include the projects outlined in the work program and the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thanks to all of our planning staff that have been working on this, and at this point, I would ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments they haven't already said or asked. See, ma'am clerk, do we have any members of the public that are signed up to speak on this matter?
We have one member of the public signed up to speak, Mr. Mike Jaski.
Good morning, Chair Serna and supervisors. I'm Mike Jaski, representing Sacramento Area Congregations Together, specifically its Housing and Homelessness Committee. As you know, SAC Act is a multi-faith, multi-ethnic, social justice organization, and our different faith traditions share in common desire to act compassionately for the poor and downtrodden. Today, I'm just going to summarize the more detailed letter that we submitted yesterday, focusing on the housing element. First, actually, may I indulge your permission to have the clerk put up Slide 5 of Jacob's presentation? That's the table that you spent a lot of time talking about.
Metro Cable, can you please requeue Slide number five of the last presentation?
While that's coming up, let me just note that from the perspective of an advocate, the extremely low, the very low, the low are grossly behind schedule. Yes, all those various comments that you made earlier, you know, there are reasons, but there are people who need housing, there are people who are on the street who need affordable housing. There's a connection between the amount of affordable housing, the number of poor and otherwise disadvantaged people who need affordable housing, who don't have it, who are on the street today. There's a need for affordable housing for people now in permanent supportive housing who can't get out of it because they can't afford to move to anywhere on their own. They don't need the services of permanent supportive housing anymore, but, and that just slows the progression of homeless people through the system. So while it's a complicated process to develop affordable housing, it has severe consequences for thousands and thousands of people, not just in the unincorporated jurisdiction that you control, but throughout the county. So we've reviewed the housing element progress report that was an attachment to the presentation, or the documentation. Yes, there's progress on many of those elements, but as Jacob summarized sort of very broadly, there's others that are behind schedule, not even started, according to the original schedule that was established. You need to figure out how to get more attention to this issue, and that comes from you. There's resources that are constrained in the community services, part of the staff. If that's the issue, figure out how to hire the appropriate number of staff so that those things, many of them very meritorious, can actually move forward, and so that we have some chance of solving this.
Can you conclude your remarks, please, Mike?
Let me just wind up by saying, people who are on the street, people who are going to be on the street, can't afford to wait for the five, 10, 15 years to build out these major projects. There's got to be a way for the county to figure out how to streamline its rules, how to create processing incentives, if not, direct financial support to get affordable housing moving faster.
Thank you, Mike.
And finally, let me wrap up by saying, all people deserve decent housing, and we're, the whole community is better off if we all have it.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll just respond by saying, I think, to a person up here, we don't disagree with anything you've said. We are most aware of the housing crisis, we are most aware of the fact that we still have way, 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 way too many people that are unhoused on the streets, in our parkways, under our overpasses. I, for one, am very proud of our staff as it relates to their commitment and their dedication and their creativity when it comes to not just the funding and finding resources to help us advance our desperate need to bring people out of those circumstances of homelessness, but that extends certainly from our social service side and public health side to our planning and building and community development and economic development side. Equally proud of our team as it relates to their commitment and their creativity and their dedication, again, to fulfilling what we have an obligation to do, which, as I mentioned earlier, which is not necessarily producing the housing, that's not what municipalities and counties do, but for maximizing the opportunities for all types of housing, including very low and extremely low investments. And, you know, it's not lost on us that this is something that is a very high priority, remains a high priority for us. We can all mention in our respective districts where we are making progress, the depth of the challenge is great, but I, for progress. The depth of the challenge is great, but I, for one, am just extremely proud of our county team because they've taken it about as serious as it can be taken. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. As one who spent a good portion of my career in the homebuilding industry and in development in general, I have a little bit of knowledge in this area. And I appreciate the comments made about continuous improvement, and I appreciate the comments from the chair that the county doesn't directly control the production. But I will say this, that in, just like in many industries, housing is a supply and demand economy. And to the extent that you want to bring home prices down, lowercase a, affordable, not uppercase A, affordable, which is very complex when you get into the different financing stacks, it's, it's really a numbers game. And the one thing that the county can control is how difficult or easy the process is. And so I would recommend that as we undertake this and we really try to be the tip of the spear and the best place to do business, that we look at our own processes and how much we act as a gatekeeper versus how much we act as a facilitator. And I'll say that on one of the Delta Boards that I said on their undertaking a lean six sigma process, and so far, they're doing it with respect to the production of agenda materials. And they went from a hundred and something step flowchart down to about 25, just because they removed the superfluous steps that didn't even bother. These were the value-added steps. These are what were legally required, and these are the steps. And so just if we can kind of do that, I mean, what is the lean six sigma is define, hold on here, I have it pulled up. It is define, measure, analyze, improve, and control. And so, you know, just to map it out, flowchart it, what it takes from somebody to go from idea to building, and it would probably astonish all of us. So if we can figure out how to get out of our own way, then that certainly makes those goals of providing more housing for everybody a little bit cheaper, a little bit faster, and a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Supervisor Hume, I am a big, big supporter of lean six sigma, kisan, or any of those process improvements. I think that any process that we have that has the potential to have pain points or obstacles when you utilize lean in that format, it's amazing what can be identified. And I've been a strong, you know, proponent of utilizing lean even for homelessness in general, like just be able to identify so many of their barriers and the pain points within the process of when somebody is homeless, then, you know, what are those barriers? Is it housing? Is it, you know, access to mental health, you know, mental health care or addiction recovery? So I am such a supporter, and I'm really pleased to hear that, that you've made that recommendation because it is, it is the way to go when you want to make improvements to any kind of process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments, questions from board members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any others sign up to speak on the matter?
There are none.
Okay, so we do have a recommendation in front of us. At this point, entertain a motion. Chair will move. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Yeah, it passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 34 is to approve the Sacramento County Good Neighbor Policy for Shelter and Housing Programs Serving People Experiencing Homelessness.
Good morning. Shavon Katari, Deputy County Executive, Social Services. And I'm presenting today because the policy that I'm presenting really overlaps several of my departments, but I do have my department heads here to answer questions should something specific come up. So last October, the staff from the Department of Healthcare Services presented on the Grove Florin Behavioral Health Housing Project. At that time, the Board of Supervisors expressed desire to receive and approve a Good Neighbor Policy. And as a reminder, our existing Safe Stay communities and shelters do have Good Neighbor Policies that the board helped to inform as we brought those projects forward for approval. At that time in October, staff recommended developing a countywide set of minimum standards, standard practices to serve as Good Neighbor Policy guidelines for shelters and housing programs serving people experiencing homelessness. This is to avoid the inconsistencies across our various programs. So if approved today, this policy would apply not only to the Grove Florin Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Project, but it will be aligned with the county's more generalized Good Neighbor Policies for all of our county office buildings and, and other centers. So in order to create this policy, staff from several of our Health and Human Service Departments collaboratively reviewed existing policies that have been applied to various program types and agreed upon a baseline set of standards for county-funded homeless service programs. The Good Neighbor Policy addresses several key areas, setting minimum standard practices, including but not limited to sufficient parking, waiting areas, and restrooms, so as to not disrupt the surrounding communities, maintenance and cleanliness standards, including debris removal, graffiti removal, and landscaping, managing crowds and anyone who's loitering in the area surrounding these programs, and keeping good community relationships with neighboring residents and businesses, including addressing community concerns proactively and assisting in crime prevention. Based on specific needs of each of these communities, there could be additions or addendums to this policy that can be added into our contracts with the providers in those neighborhoods. So our recommendation today is to adopt the attached resolution to approve the Sacramento County Good Neighbor Policy for Shelter and Housing Programs Serving People Experiencing Homelessness, to authorize the directors of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, Human Assistance, Health Services, and Child, Family, and Adult Services to amend existing homeless service contracts to ensure compliance with the approved policy. And then upon approval, staff will review and update these contracts across the departments according to the minimum standards, and will collaborate with the affected programs to ensure compliance and to ensure community engagement when implementing the policy at each site. So with that, like I, like I said, the department heads are here to answer questions. I'm also available for questions.
Thank you, Shavon. We do have supervisors in the queue. We will start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Shavon, so just to make it clear, you said that this is basically a baseline, but we're going to have to individualize each one as it comes on because each of these, as we have found with our experience, has different circumstances depending on where it is and how it's operated and all that.
Absolutely. And community engagement is really a good example of that, where certain communities are going to want more of a voice. In every community, we want to always have a county touchdown, like somebody who they can call if they're having problems. But some communities may want to counsel, like in the case of Florin and Power N, and other communities may just want a contact information. So we'll have to develop that as we go.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think flexibility is important. It's nice to have consistency and expectations, but we have to be flexible because they are all different. The other question, so who is this, who will this be between? Is this between, is this part of our measures when we adopt a project like this? So therefore, the operator signs on to it? Is it between the, and then I guess the most important part is we're seeing in some areas is who enforces?
Right, right. No, it's a good question. So these policies will be applied to our operators as well as some of our county-operated buildings, and they'll be contractually obligated to follow these policies. Enforcement's an interesting question because I think it really depends on what it is and where the location is. So we know, for instance, in, if one of our locations was in a city jurisdiction, it really would be up to city code enforcement, law enforcement, whatever the entity was to, to enforce that. And we will work closely with those jurisdictions. In the county, we may need support with law enforcement, and in some cases with the sheriff's department. And in some cases, it might just be a matter of contractual compliance, us holding the operator to account.
That last part is extremely important because there's sometimes a hesitance on the part of the operator to, they want to, they want to have these as low barriers possible. We all agree that there's different heights of the barriers depending on the location. But we have to hold our contractors and the people who are operating there on a 24-hour basis accountable to make sure that these measures are put into effect.
Absolutely. It has to be a balance. Like you said, there's no way our programs will be successful if we don't have the community support for these programs, and we can't get that if we're not holding ourselves accountable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I first really appreciate this coming to the board for a discussion. I think this is extremely important, and Supervisor Kennedy hit it on, hit on several of things I was going to bring up as well. I think that's really important that you brought out the issue relating to whether a shelter is in the city or county, and what the kind of relationship and what the complexities are with shelters that may be in the county but border the city. Because like, like you mentioned, the county does not have control over code enforcement, or trash pickup, or law enforcement in those city areas. And so I know we have a representative from the City of Sacramento here today that'll be talking on the next item. But are, do you know if the City of Sacramento has a kind of a general Good Neighbor Policy like this at all, Shavon?
I believe they do. I'm going to look to Brian. Yeah, okay. He's shaking his head. And Brian's going to be available during the next presentation to talk about the city. But if you want him to come up, he can. I will say, we work very closely with the City of Sacramento and our other city partners on these issues. We meet with our city partners weekly to talk about these issues as they come up. But it is complex, to your point. Would you like Brian to come up?
No, I'll wait till the next item. Ask a few questions about that. But no, Brian's always great to see you. Thank you for being here. I think it's, I think it's a good policy. I think we, as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, it can be tailored to the unique situation of the different shelters. But I also think, as you said, I want to underscore the importance in terms of just the, the community involvement in having one of these, and the amount of engagement, which will, which will vary depending on where it is. And I know Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Serna have already done a lot in terms of that community outreach in the shelters in their respective districts, and we will be doing a lot of that. I've already done a lot of that pre-construction with the Safe Stay community that's going to be coming online in, on Wad Avenue. I think this, this instills a lot of confidence in the community that we have something that's formalized like this. So I just appreciate your work. And I think it also dovetails with, you know, right now, there's legislative efforts to impose additional scrutiny on shelters, more from the perspective of, of course, the residents in those shelters themselves. But I think there are some elements of us having a formalized policy that kind of dovetails with some of those legislative efforts to have more scrutiny and make sure our, our shelters across the board meet certain requirements. Not, not a barrier to participation or enrollment, certainly, but with an understanding that there has to be certain minimum rules and standards that need to be followed if you're, if you're going to be taking advantage of one of those shelters. So thank you, Shavon.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Shavon. One of, I just want to share one of the conversations I had with David and Shavon, and it was around the community relations and the word engage, and how engage is a very subjective word when it comes to how providers will be engaging with the community. But I think that we've touched on that, some of them are different, and that it will, it will be probably catered to the, how that particular shelter is. And then the other thing is, you know, it may not, it may be beneficial to have, to see how the City of Sacramento has their Good Neighbor Policy in comparison to the county, and see what we could do to, you know, sort of have an identical process that has an expectation of how our shelters will operate their business. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We, in fact, we just had a discussion yesterday with our city partners about just the need for more consistency across the system. And so some of what will be coming to the board in upcoming months will be talking about ways that we can become more consistent.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Other comments, questions from board members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have members of the public sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right. Very good.
Chair, I'm happy to move approval of the Good Neighbor Policy.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
That item passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 35 is the semi-annual homelessness report.
Good morning. And if the clerk could pull up the PowerPoint. Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the board. I'm Emily Howkin, the Director of your Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And while I'm going to be giving the presentation today, I do want to acknowledge that this is, I come every, every six months, oftentimes more times in between, to give you a, a high-level update of the work that's coming out of my department and in partnership with our sister departments, as well as the City of Sacramento and others. And so I just want to acknowledge that all of my staff contribute to this, but a couple in particular, Rachel Davidson is here in chambers with us. She oversees all of our outreach efforts and does a tremendous job. And while he's not in chambers today, I want to acknowledge Andrew Gurking. He's very behind the scenes. He's doing all the data pulling, maintaining our dashboards, and really providing the information that I'm able to give to you to, to be as accountable as possible.
Really quick, Emily, Chair Serna, do you want us to ask questions as the slides come up, or?
Why would we break from tradition now?
As the slides come up?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my preference. Thank you.
Okay, great. So as I said, this is what we call our biannual update on our, the county-specific efforts to address homelessness. This report typically does follow, as it does today, the city-county partnership agreement that goes to the city council, and it was there just a few weeks ago. But this report focuses mostly on similar efforts that we're doing in the unincorporated component, parts of the, of the county. And so the partnership agreement report is attached to your board letter as attachment two. I'm not going to go through all of the deliverables of the partnership agreement, but I do want to draw your attention. If you flip through it, you will see that we're very happy to report that all of the objectives have been met. The partnership agreement has been a great cornerstone for us as partners to, to work together and to change systems. And so it's really been, we're proud to say that we've delivered everything we committed to and continuing to work very, very closely with the city. So while I'm not going to delve into the data specific in the city, as Shavon said, Brian Pedro, who's the Director of the Department of Community Response, is here today and is available to answer any questions you might have about efforts specific to the City of Sacramento. And then additionally, my colleagues from the Department of Health Services are going to follow up with some information on our behavioral health outreach partnership that happens not only in the county but also in the city. And then finally, Shavon alluded to this as well, but today's workshop is very focused narrowly on county-led efforts, but we recognize that our efforts are only as good as the bigger system of care. And that includes efforts of the cities, Sacramento Steps Forward, our local community-based organizations. And so we are planning with all of those entities, a broader system-wide conversation, hopefully to be had with you as well as the city council coming up later this spring. So with that, we'll start with outreach. I'm going to talk a little about our sheltering efforts, and then hand it over to Sherri to walk you through behavioral health efforts. So as a reminder, here in the county, we are very committed to having outreach teams that are case-carrying. And that really means that our outreach staff are working directly with clients and maintaining that relationship, hopefully, until the point that the people leave unsheltered homelessness. The services that they provide on the streets include such things as case management, housing search assistance, vital document retrieval, transportation support, and behavioral health referrals. And we think this is a really critical component to successfully using our outreach folks to connect people and exit them permanently from homelessness. The county currently contracts with Community Health Works, or COHO, as we like to call them, who are also here today. In the audience, we have Ryan, Tiffany, and Jamie, who are all directly working on the ground with folks experiencing homelessness in the Parkway as well as the unincorporated county. And if the board would like, they're available to share some of the outcomes they're seeing related to engagement with CalAim services, as well as some of the more one-on-one interactions they're having with people living unsheltered here in the county. The COHO team currently includes 22 community health workers or navigators who co-deploy with our four clinicians and peer specialists with behavioral health. And Sherri's going to talk more about those team members. This slide just shows a snapshot of some of the demographics of the folks that are
Excuse me. Sorry, we have a question or comment from Supervisor Rodriguez.
Sure. Emily, on page two, the proactive outreach to county-identified priority camps, what would define a priority camp?
Sure, yeah. So that could be something like, we've had the case where the Department of Transportation has a roadway improvement project, and there's an encampment along the right-of-way, and so we need to get people out of the way for safety. It could be a report that comes through the sheriff's office, or the ranger's office, or your offices of a growing encampment with, with debris. It really is our ability to proactively get out to wherever we need to be. The definitions are loose, but we try to, to provide resources to meet the needs of our other county departments.
Thank you.
Yeah. So these demographics show a snapshot, as I said, of the folks who were enrolled in our outreach program. That means actively enrolled and working with COHO during the last six months of last calendar year. These demographics are pretty consistent with previous reports, and they also very much reports, and they also very much align with who we see in system-wide reports, such as the point-in-time count, but also some system dashboards and reporting that Sacramento Steps Forward maintains. Most importantly is showing the impact of our outreach efforts. And we're very proud of this and really happy to have the partnership of COHO. You can see in the last six months of last year, our county-funded outreach teams provided over 25,000 individual services to 810 unduplicated individuals.
Emily?
Sorry?
Yes.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted some clarification because it's a question I had as far as the numbers of individuals served. So on that slide and in the report, it references 810 unduplicated individuals. And then later, when we talk about shelter performance enrollment, that figure goes up to, talks about households, but then 1,358 distinct individuals. And then, when it gets to the BHS data summary, it says 1,360 unhoused residents were referred to county. And so, I'm just a little confused because the numbers don't align.
Definitely understand and apologize for that. So the 810 is the people who during the six months of last year were enrolled in outreach services, meaning they were living unsheltered at a point in time during that six months. The second number you referred to are people who were enrolled in our shelter programs. Some of them could be the same people, but many of them could not be. And that does reflect the capacity of our shelters. And then the third number, the behavioral health, I believe, and I'll let Sheri confirm, is touching on the broader swath of folks throughout the county, not just unincorporated.
I see. And that was, and thank you for that, because that's the lead into my next question, is are these numbers unincorporated county, or the county as a geographic area?
So you'd think that would be, so these numbers on this slide right now, the 810, are unincorporated or Parkway. So the people in our outreach program are all living within county-controlled land. The shelters, because we have coordinated access, and so we don't necessarily only, we don't stop the line at who can access a shelter, could be, could and does include folks from throughout the county, including many of the cities. And then the behavioral health, as I said, they don't really, they work across jurisdictions as well. So completely understandable why it is confusing, and I apologize for that.
That's very helpful information. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
So Emily, just to clarify, this is the 14% of the overall, correct? So this is the 14% that is unincorporated Sacramento County.
I think you're referring to the point-in-time count, which was about 14% of the point-in-time count was in the unincorporated county.
Okay.
So this, I believe, this is a different count, but yet, if you were to try to match it up to the point-in-time count, this would match loosely how the point-in-time count delineates by geography. The point-in-time count doesn't look at the Parkway distinguishable from the parts of the county it runs through, so it's not as exact. But it's, that's as analogous as you could get within the point-in-time count. And I should say, 810 people is unlikely the total count of people experiencing homelessness in the unincorporated county for the last six months. It is the count of people who engaged with our outreach teams and were willing to enroll in outreach services. But of those 810 people, you can see the level of services provided. And over 25,000 services, which equates to approximately 31 services per participant, those can happen over multiple visits, those can happen in one visit. It really is client-driven. And most, most important to us, and really something we're extremely proud of, is that these teams were able to support 184 people during those six months to move out of unsheltered homelessness, either into temporary or permanent housing. So this could be facilitating movements into shelter, into a treatment program, but it also includes folks who left directly from unsheltered homelessness into permanent housing. There were 67 of those, of that category. Moving into the shelter programs, unless folks want to ask more about outreach?
I do. I do have a question.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, it's fine. A quick question. Do we know the average cost per person for outreach?
I don't off the top of my head, but we can follow. We definitely, I mean, I know how much the contract is, and you can do a loose, what I think is more important, and we've been asked this before, and so I can endeavor to do a little bit more deep diving, not just for you but for the other supervisors, is the cost of providing these services versus the cost of not. And there's lots of national studies that show the extreme sort of cost to society of folks living unsheltered. And that includes the cost to law enforcement, and that includes the cost of healthcare. We don't have it specific here to Sacramento, but I can do a little bit more work and provide some of the research that's out there related to that, if it's helpful.
Thank you. That would be great.
Yeah. Okay. So moving over to the county-funded shelter programs, and just because this was asked before, this is not going to necessarily relate to people who were unsheltered in the county and, or in the unincorporated county and now are in our shelters. These are shelters that are operated and funded out of my department. And as a matter of fact, many of these shelters are not in the unincorporated county physically. They are in the City of Sacramento, or in one case, the City of Rancho Cordova. This data is primarily coming from the dashboards, which I've shared with all of you, and we talked about the last time I was here at the biannual update. All of this data comes from HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System. And we do update that dashboard monthly to give you a snapshot. So I'm going to share just some highlights today.
Emily?
Yes.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Emily, how are we measuring outcomes for these particular shelters?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the primary thing that we look at is efficacy of moving people out of shelter into a permanent housing. That's our number-one priority. And you'll see later some of the data on that. As a system, we have a shared goal of exiting 42% of folks from homelessness into permanent housing across the system. Some of our shelters are meeting that, some are not. We're working to improve those that are not. Other things that we commonly look at, though, include length of stay. Ideally, people would stay for the shortest amount of time necessary to move them into permanent housing. And we also look toward negative exits, people who are returning back to the streets, and why those reasons are, and what can we do to minimize those negative exits. We also just look generally at demographics, and are we trending in line with what we know about the homeless population in general? Are we seeing any disparities? Are we seeing demographics that are prompting us to change our response? So for example, as we see the aging of the homeless population, it triggers us to think, what additional services do we need to bring to meet the needs of these folks that we're now seeing come into our shelters we didn't before?
Thank you. I have one more question.
Yeah, of course.
How do we validate our shelters are performing according to the scope of work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we hold, out of my department, and then my sister departments have a few of these as well, we hold the contracts, and we do do contract monitoring. I have teams of planners who are weekly doing case conferencing with our shelters to make sure that the very individual level client issues are resolved, client exits are successful. And then we do financial and program monitoring on an annual basis. It's a little bit challenging. We have shelters in our community, some of our newer shelters, which have been resourced really well, the new safe stays, and have a plethora of resources available to them. And we have shelters in our community who've been around for many, many, many years and may not be resourced the same. So it's a little bit apples and oranges, and we're working really hard to lift up so that all of our shelters are even playing field, so that then we can be a little bit more prescriptive about outcomes, if that makes sense.
You know, something, as you were speaking earlier, is when we have our different shelters, and some are performing better than others, you know, and they are competition to each other. But at the end of the day, best practices are something that would be great to extract and then share that overall with these providers.
I agree. I think that's fair. And you will, you'll see differences, not just, it's surprising, facility differences can make a difference. So some of our shelters have very large common rooms where it's easy to have gatherings and case management, and some are, you know, kind of don't have those facility improvements. Some are serving, you know, populations that include children, and so there's different needs. So, but you are correct. There are best practices, and our shelter providers and community providers in general, I think, should and can be good resources to each other to lift up.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just, these are the eight, I believe, shelters that are going to, that are included in the data I'm going to show you now. We are working to pull in additional shelter programs, including some that are not directly operated on my department. You'll see on here, because this is last year, it doesn't include, for example, the Stockton Safe State. It hadn't opened at the time the data was pulled. And we're continually adding new programs as they come onboard. So again, the demographics, this looks pretty similar to what we saw in regards to the outreach program. You'll see the sort of same breakdown between genders and race. The one thing I did want to lift up here is the age bracket here has a pretty broad range of 45 to 64. But we did dive in to look at the number of folks who are being served in our shelters who are 55 or older, as sort of a demarcation, and that is 30%. So in the last six months of last year, 30% of guests in our county-funded shelters were aged 55 and older. And keep in mind that we do have two-family shelters, which by definition have minor children with them. So that's throwing off the average. If you took those children out, we'd see a much higher average. And this is one of those data points that we try to monitor and is concerning to us because the needs of folks as they advance in age becomes more challenging.
Excuse me, Emily?
Yeah.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Yeah, you mentioned the 30% over 55. That is definitely, I agree with you. It's a very concerning population because as you age and you are, you know, you're in a shelter, it makes it very difficult at that point even to, you know, survive long-term. Is there a plan to address the 30% aging homeless population?
That is a great question. I would actually surmise that the population is more, there's just the folks in our shelters. So one of the, a program that we all committed to during the regionally-coordinated homelessness action plan, or RCHAP, which the board adopted last fall, as did the city council, was commit a study on the needs for folks as they age, not just healthcare issues, but we have people who can't take care of their activities for daily living, or ADLs, they have mobility issues. Some of our facilities are not built to that. We, the county has engaged a consultant in about the past month, and she's doing assessments of the existing shelter program, and she's going to bring some recommendations to us as a system that could include things like how to adapt existing shelters to bring in more extensive healthcare services, or physical improvements, or other services that just are lacking in our system overall. So we just engaged her. I think the contract started about three or four weeks ago.
Yeah. I think for long-term, you know, the, we have the baby boomers that are already in this age population, and baby boomers are, they're huge. And so, when you look at the potential long-term, and we start looking at preventative measures, this population is going to be one that we're going to have to keep an eye on and ensure that we find the, you know, the resources to be able to ensure that aging people are able to be in a shelter if they fall into homelessness. Thank you.
Yeah. And maybe for our bigger system workshop, and I'm looking at Trent here, who really is the holder of this sort of system-wide data, I've heard many folks, including Trent and others who are experts in the demographics, talk about the sort of, folks who are experiencing homelessness, aged while homeless, versus folks entering homelessness for the first time at an advanced age. And we're seeing both of those trends, and it's a very different response needed. And so, perhaps as we plan for that workshop, we can do a little more deep dives into some of those demographic trends, system-wide, because again, this is a snapshot of eight shelters. But I totally agree with you. It's definitely something we are seeing and really challenged to provide appropriate services for.
Just really quick, I want to say, you know, this is in reference to the presentation prior to this, where it showed that the regional needs housing assessment, we have, you know, I mean, out of the 4,000, we only created 75, and that's very low. So as we have this aging population that may be on social security or some, you know, some form of government, you know, some form of assistance, the funding is really small. So it's, that very low housing is going to be really key to ensuring that we can get some of this aging population into housing. Thank you.
Yes. And that was a great preview for my next slide. There's lots of data points we could pull out, but we pulled out a few others, which I think underscore the point you're making, Supervisor Rodriguez. Again, looking at the same population of folks who were in our shelters in the last six months, some of the challenges which I think will resonate with you about why it's difficult for folks, and thinking about Mike Jaski's point, to move out of shelters into affordable housing. 64% of the folks have self-reported a disabling condition. This could be anything from a mental health issue to a physical issue to a chronic health disease, but that's pretty significant. And the amount of co-occurring disorders that we see in the population is pretty high as well. Speaking to what you just said, Supervisor Rodriguez, 40% at entry into the shelter system as a whole have zero income. I haven't done the cut here, but I could to see how many, the next band is probably people living off of social security, which is not enough to afford an apartment on your own. And then, sort of speaking to what I just said about aging while you're homeless, the average length of time that a person had experienced homelessness before entering our shelter system was almost four years. So what this tells me is we are doing what we committed to doing, which is targeting the most vulnerable folks living outside. But this also is going to exacerbate length of stay and make it much more difficult to folks to moving out because the preponderance of these issues are just really challenging.
Supervisor Kenny.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up and to get clarification on what you said about the 40% self-reported no income, and then you said there's a stratus that had, that's on, that's on social security. I got it. Why is 40% so high? Why, this is my ignorance here, so this is not a loaded question. Why, it seems like, you know, vast majority of these folks would qualify for social security. So when we, when we're meeting with them, when we're, particularly when we bring them into the shelters, we're getting them signed up to social security where we can, right?
Yes, yes. So this is that entry. And so, I agree with you. This is not about eligibility. This is about actually accessing benefits. But you are correct, is that most folks here should be and are eligible. You'll see the same trend where folks enter into different programs and are not connected with healthcare, despite we have an Affordable Care Act, which most people should be eligible for. And so, this is one of the first things we do, sign up for benefits. But this just means they've probably been living outside for years and years and not taking advantage.
Entry, I understand. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So I had a couple of questions on these numbers as they related to some of the graphs later in the report. So my first question is, relative to the disabling conditions, two of the bar charts are mental health and substance use disorder. And then there's also developmental, and I don't know what that developmental piece is.
Developmental disability would be stuff like autism, ADHD, those types of conditions.
Okay. So it's a, I guess, a debilitating condition that is not necessarily mental health.
And keep in mind, this is all self-reported, so it's going to be very different than what behavioral health's going to provide, which is a clinical assessment.
And that was my second question is, I would imagine for a couple of these to be self-reported, one requires an awareness and also requires a kind of a, you know, an admission on the part of the individual. I would assume that the actual rate might be higher than what's self-reported?
Yeah, I think that maybe when I ask, is when Sheri comes up, if she can sort of talk about that, that clinical, because I think that you're right, there's probably a knowledge gap of like, what's, what is going on or isn't going. There's an awareness. And there's also a willingness to share at the point of entry into a new place. One of the great things about having our behavioral health partners there is that they can do, the more time spent getting trust built, and also do that clinical assessment of what's actually occurring here. You're probably correct, is that on both ends, people are either over-reporting things that actually don't exist and/or under-reporting. I think that's a fair assessment. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my next question is about the length of time. You mentioned previously about there being both instances of people aging within homelessness to represent an older population, but also coming into homelessness at an older age. You know, I've said many times before, and this comes to no surprise, I'm not a fan of housing first. And one of the reasons is because it focuses on the most vulnerable first, which in many cases are also the hardest to cycle back out of homelessness. Whereas, I would have a different definition of vulnerable, to say that those who have just entered homelessness are the most vulnerable to getting sort of into the deeper hole that now becomes harder to pull them back out. And so, is it a safe assumption to say that the longer somebody spends in homelessness, the harder it is to help get them back out of that, their situation?
I think it's definitely a safe assumption to make. I also completely agree with you that the more we can prevent folks from entering homelessness and becoming the next person who's been on the streets for four years. And so, just as we ratchet up our crisis interventions and our shelter interventions, we need to simultaneously work at the other end on preventative measures, because those folks who are on the lower vulnerability scale and just fell out of homelessness, actually a shelter is not an appropriate place for them. What's more appropriate is let's help pay your rent and get you back connected with mom or dad, or stay out of homelessness. And so, we can, again, at our bigger conversation, focus on some of those upstream measures that we're making. We're not doing enough. And I think, I don't want to spoil the message from SSF, but when you look at data, you know, where we, long-term, would make more impact is if we had more prevention upfront and more affordable housing at the back end. But we're in such a crisis... and more affordable housing at the back end. But we're in such a crisis moment of people literally dying on the streets that we're sort of faced with this challenge of how do you balance those things?
And so what if we even weren't to, you know, recognize the task of getting all the way upstream and focus on falling into the river? Like, just that moment when it happens to get it corrected out quickly.
Right. So in our world, we call that diversion. So prevention is a little further upstream. Diversion means I'm knocking on the door of the shelter and I want to stay there tonight. How do I keep you out of the shelter?
Gotcha.
And we don't, I would say that is an effort that SSF is leading on our behalf. We have some other community partners doing some of that work. It's really hard to tell that tipping point of like, but for this help, you're going to be on the streets. But those are A, much cheaper interventions, right, and often much more effective than they, so I agree with you, and we do have some of those resources as people knock on the door. We don't have enough, as clearly is evidenced by sort of the broader system inflow, because even as we're moving people out, people are still falling in.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Emily?
Yes?
How deep a dive is there on the self-reported disabling condition front? In other words, do we know if someone is experiencing substance use disorder, what their particular disorder is? Is it alcoholism? Is it meth? Is it opioid addiction?
We do not know that level of detail, but what I do have, and I do have it because I thought somebody might ask this, is amongst those disabling conditions, how many self-report mental health versus substance use disorder? But I don't have the data on which substance, for example. And on the behavioral health or the mental health issues, again, I would probably look more towards once they're enrolled in behavioral services, that clinical level of insight into what the actual diagnosis is. But I am happy to share if you want the...
So you don't, you don't have the data, but does it exist?
It does, I do not believe that the type of substance exists in HMIS, no. So I'm right. The type of substances does not exist in HMIS where I'm pulling this from. I don't know if behavioral health, once you're enrolled in that level of service, would have that level of detail. And I think I'm seeing Sherry say, yes, we would.
We do?
For folks enrolled in behavior, in county behavioral health.
That is a statistics that I would be very interested in understanding a little bit better in terms of which disorders, dependency disorders are relevant to how they report their disability.
I can tell you, breaking apart this data, and it's not going to add up correctly because people can self-report many disabilities, but 35% of the folks in our shelters in this timeframe self-reported substance use disorder as one or more of their disabling conditions.
And similar to, we're all politicians up here, so we look at polls on occasion, but can you get, can we get cross tabs on like, understanding demographic information relative to the types of disorders, that kind of thing, and gender as well?
We could definitely do demographic cuts, probably not with an HMIS, the types of disorder, but for example, yes, my staff or working with Trent and his staff could look at gender and age differentiation between self-reporting substance use disorder versus chronic health conditions. We absolutely can do that.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
So a couple of weeks ago, I asked for a report on deaths for the past five years in Sacramento County, which I found to be incredibly enlightening on, and I don't know what the correlation is of deaths to individuals who died on the street, and it showed the cause. And so fentanyl, fentanyl poisoning was a very profound, profoundly seen in many of these deaths. And so it'll be interesting to look at the cause of deaths versus some of this data that we're talking about right now, which I, and I don't know, but it seems like there may be a relevance on, because it even showed some of them on alcohol, poisoning, suicides, so on.
Yeah. And we have had a few initial conversations, that data you're referring to comes from the Coroner, which is obviously separately held here, about doing some cross tabulations. We would need identifying information, because the folks that she's dealing with may or may not be in our system, right? They could have died on the streets, unknown to us. But I do appreciate that, and so how can we as a system of care, while we have them before they, their death, potentially intervene? I'm happy to talk more with her about it. It is an interesting tool.
It is very interesting.
But it's not as easy to sort of cross-tab with our database.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. So just another item to lift about, again, our county-funded shelters, is shelter utilization, is something that we're very keen on, making sure we don't have empty beds, if at all we can avoid it. And you can see that from July to December of last year, this is the number the Supervisor Hume referenced earlier, we served about 1,300 individuals in about 1,100 households. Households could be inclusive of children or not. And you can see that on average, our utilization rate hovers around 90%. We track this on a monthly basis. Utilization can go up or down based on facility issues. Sometimes we have to stop enrollment because we have some facility issues, certainly as new shelters come onboard. It takes time to ramp up. But most of our shelters, all but, all but two of them are within the coordinated access system, which is helping us to improve utilization. So there's not sort of a, you have to know which door to knock on, and so we're really happy to be working with Sacramento Steps Forward so that we can improve efficacy countywide, system-wide, to make sure that every bed that's available is filled as quickly as possible.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
So you gave me a report of all the locations, all the shelters, and I think the report that you gave me had all of them, those in the county and those within the city, or I guess every location.
Yes, I think what you're talking about, I gave you a version of what's called the Housing Inventory Count, or HIC, which our continuum of care is required to do annually to report to HUD, homeless programs. And so I had separated it out by both who funds it, and then the geography of it. So it was inclusive of every shelter program that we know of, that is either privately or publicly funded in the county of Sacramento.
And so when I looked at this particular report, I looked at, there's about a 10%, you know, somewhere between 10 and 15% vacancy. And so what are the barriers to achieving 100% utilization rate by every shelter?
So, yeah, so I just want to clarify, this 90% is only of the eight county-funded shelters, but the question still stands. Some of it is just turnover and how quickly it takes to find somebody, get them transported there, get them doc-ready, or whatever documents they might need for the shelter. Some of it is, certain shelters have certain priorities that take a little bit longer. So, for example, some shelters can serve folks with their pets and some can't. And so if you're, on a way, some shelters have requirements to do a little bit more vetting and background checks, and so which can just delay the time. Sometimes it's just natural, like, one of the restrooms is down, so we got to close some beds. But it is a shared goal, I think, system-wide, of making that utilization shrink to much closer to 100%. We're probably never going to be 100%, right? Because if I move out today, it's going to take a day or two for me to turn the bed over and clean it and whatnot. But there's a lot of factors at why, and I will say that the, this goes through December, as we looked, as we've looked at January and February, we're already seeing higher rates within the county-funded shelters. So we're continually watching that.
Do we know how many people were in the queue for that second half of the year waiting, and I'm going to use the word in 211, because that's where people call?
I don't know the exact number, but on a weekly basis, S.A.C. Steps Forward sends out a list, and I'd say on average, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the singles waitlist tends to hover around 3,000 people, and the family waitlist tends to hover around 600 families.
So today, like today, there are 3,000 people waiting to get into a shelter?
Probably somewhere around there.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you Emily. This 90% utilization rate, is that pretty consistent with other large jurisdictions that operate, the level of number of shelters that we do?
I believe it's pretty consistent throughout our county. I don't know if I've looked at other counties. You know, for example, our family shelters tend to stay fully occupied a little bit easier than some of the singles. I have not looked at other jurisdictions, but happy to do that.
I suspect, I suspect it's probably in line, based on the reasons you've articulated. And then what percentage of the total 1,358 distinct individuals enrolled, what percentage of them were in scattered site shelters?
Well, that's 145 beds, so, but they turn over. But I could get that for you. I can get the utilization. And actually, I did provide for David at his request, utilization by shelter types. I'm happy to share that with you as well. We did February, the first month, so we did break it down by the exact shelter, so I can send that to you.
And then a follow-up, something Supervisor Rodriguez just brought up, which I know I've had a lot of discussions with both Coho staff and your office, and I think others, is, you know, 3,600 or so people on a list right now waiting to get into a shelter. Do we have a sense, just based on experience, out of that 3,600, if we were to offer them a shelter bed today, what percentage of them would accept it and go into the shelter? Do you have a sense of that, just anecdotally, based on what we see?
I will give it my shot, and then maybe ask the Coho folks who are much closer to on the ground to weigh in. I think that where we see success is when we can offer a shelter bed that's available today, that meets the needs and desires of that person. That often means it's non-congregate. It often means they can come with their pets or their possessions. And so it often means it's in the community where they feel at home and feel safe. When we, sometimes it's challenging for folks to, I don't want to put in air quotes, but accept a placement on a waitlist that they may or may not feel is going to translate into an actual shelter bed. So it's a little bit challenging to discern where the barrier is. Is it that, why would I put myself on this waitlist with 3,000 other people and never get off? Is that a statement of desire to be sheltered, or is that just a statement of frustration? If that makes sense.
No, that's helpful.
And Coho staff who are day-to-day working with people may have more anecdotal information to share about some of the experiences people have shared with them.
And I, yeah, I imagine the longer they're on the waitlist, the less likely, when it does come up, they'll get in, because their circumstances may have changed dramatically, or we may have lost touch with them. And I know that happens anecdotally a lot, but the bottom line is, we need to be able to strike while the iron's hot, so to speak, and have a range of different, I think, shelter opportunities for people.
Yes. I mean, one anecdotal evidence is that we see when we open our weather respite out at the Warren Heath or Youth Center, the WETEX Center, it fills up, because it's immediately available. You can just walk up to it, right? It fills up, and it's also pouring rain and it's horrible weather, right? But it does fill up almost immediately and stays full until the weather changes.
But to add complexity, by that same token, I guess, is, there's probably a lot of people on a waitlist of 3,600 people. They may be on a waitlist, but they, very difficult to get some people even to accept shelter at all, even though they may be on a waiting list.
That is definitely true, yes. Lots and lots of variation.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Emily, is it fair to say that if they have, there are about 6,600 people, according to pick count, I believe it's higher, but, and there are 3,000, those 3,000 are people who have said, yes, I want to get into shelter and I'm waiting, because they actually made the intent to call 211. Is that correct?
Yes, or they did an assessment with their outreach workers, yes. So they are people who have raised their hand and said, I want.
So if you look at the numbers, it's a little under 50% of people that will accept the house, that are interested in housing?
I would caution, because the point, the 6,000 number in the point in time count includes 40 or 50% of the folks who were sheltered at the point in time count. So the 6,000 people in the point in time count includes, and I can't remember the proportion, but I think it was about 70/30 last time. So a good number of those folks in the point in time count were in a shelter bed.
So you said 30% of those were in a shelter?
I believe the breakdown was 30/70 or 40/60. I'm trying to remember. Yeah.
Okay.
I can, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So finally, for me, on shelter outcome, Supervisor Rodriguez asked earlier, what do we look for in terms of performance? And definitely, the most important thing for us is that you're exiting into a permanent destination and as quickly as possible. So these are those two data points shared with you. For most, we do, you know, we obviously prioritize folks exiting into a permanent housing solution. I did share that as a system, we're aiming for 42%. But we also are very supportive of exits that may be temporary, but appropriate for that person. So that could be an exit into another shelter, into a more intensive transitional program, into a treatment program. And so you can see that during the period of time in question, for the county shelters that we're talking about here, we had 52% of folks who exited did go to a, what we call a positive exit. They did not return back to the streets. And 32% of those who exited actually exited into permanent housing. And then the other challenge here, that this speaks to turnover, is that it's taking a lot longer for folks to leave. It's both because the housing market is tight, but also the preponderance of issues that we're seeing people enter into the shelter. And so you can see the average length of stay, well, you can't see, but the average length of stay is 167 days. And you do see a difference in lengths of stay when you look at the positive exitters and the negative exitters. And as you would surmise, those who have negative exits have much shorter stays, and those who have positive exits stay a much, much longer time. And so we see the benefit in that, but it does clog the system up a little bit more.
Before we get to Supervisor Rodriguez, to that last point, Emily, do we, is there an exit, standard exit interview or survey? Do we know why someone has a brief stay in a shelter? Is it because of their dependency on something? What is it typically?
So in HMIS, there is an expectation that you collect data at program exit, which includes why the person is being exited. We can't force people to share data, so it's not perfect. But I can say that I think that, I did look at this, that about half of the negative exits were because of non-compliance with program rules, which is a pretty broad, a pretty broad category. And I do want to emphasize that in all of our shelters, unless it's something egregious like violence against somebody on site or a staff person, you're given multiple chances to comply with program rules. But at some point, in order to maintain the balance of the community's success, we have to exit folks. So that is the most common reason we see, and we are working with providers to be a little bit more nuanced about capturing what's behind the story, because that doesn't really tell you a lot. But I will say the HMIS data categories are pretty prescriptive. We don't get a lot of leeway there.
But again, back to my earlier line of questioning, the data does exist?
The data does exist in HMIS, but it might not tell the entire story. But it's definitely more than, it's better than nothing, correct?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Also, what I haven't heard much about is when we have, just broadly in the entire continuum here that is focused on getting people sheltered, what I haven't heard is much about the effort to find them connection with family. So what happens on that front? Even if the family may be out of state?
Yeah.
Can you expand on that?
Yeah, certainly. So within the shelter programs, as well as our outreach programs, family connection is a very positive thing. And so I don't, I could pull the data, and I will do that afterwards and send it to you. We do capture exits to living with family or friends as an exit category. And our outreach workers, as well as our shelter providers, are directed to make those connections. And to your point, the out-of-state, we do have some resources. If there's a verified connection, we do not bust people out, but if there's a verified connection that's appropriate, and we think can help sustain it, we have and do through either direct program funds that we administer, or through our partnership at DHA, they have some what they call return to residency programs, where we can support moving somebody to wherever their family is. It does happen, potentially not as frequently as we might like.
Thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Emily, do these providers have a contract with the limit of how long a person can stay in the shelter?
So most of our contracts do not have a hard limit, but what they do say, they do require is that with every 90 days, you have to, with every, with at least every 90 days, you have to re-verify that you can stay here. So what you can't do is just come stay at the shelter and hang out and just live there. You have to actively be participating in your efforts to exit the shelter, whether that means connection to family or friends, or getting into behavioral health resources. And so as long as the people at the shelter are making progress and actively engaging in their own plan, whatever that personalized plan looks like, they can stay as long as they want. But if they're not actively participating, then after 90 days, they would be likely exited. I will say that lengths of stay are dramatically higher than we've seen even five, six, seven years ago. And I think that's really an indicator of some of the market and demographic challenges we're seeing.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. So during this time period, there were 1,070 single adults. There are 27%, or sorry, 24% over 241 days, 257 people. Why are there, why, I think I know some of the answers, but I'm just curious to know if... if maybe I'm missing other reasons. Why are there still 257 people in the shelter after that, I think, very extended period of time?
So the, I think what you're asking, and forgive me if this, I'm not answering correctly, is that this is a six-month snapshot, but people will... There's people who will stay that full six months. And so at the, on December 31st, if they were still a resident, they can roll over into January. But in order to capture a definitive period of time, we sort of have to create rules. So I think that the people that you're looking at are people who are just what we call a stayer. They were there on December 31st, they're going to be there on January 1st. So they're excluded from the data around exits, because they're not exiting, they're staying. Does that help?
Yes. And then the second part to that question is, there were 195 that exited, exited, I think it was, to the shelters. Is it first in, first out? So the longer you've been in the shelter, you become a priority to get into housing?
No, I'd say everybody's a priority. So the expectation for our providers is that, you know, day one, you're getting settled, getting acclimated, you know, getting to know the shelter staff. But by day two or three, you're working on your housing plan. The quicker we can get you out successfully, we don't... And we provide, within our contracts, case management resources so that there's a manageable load. So every shelter should have, does have, case management onsite to carry a reasonable caseload, so that they can successfully work with everybody simultaneously.
So I get that everybody's a priority, but there is 24% over 241 days in the shelter, which means they're getting close to a year of being in the shelter. Do they become a priority when the shelter, when housing or permanent supportive housing becomes available?
So permanent supportive housing, and which is also access through the coordinated access system, vulnerability is how people are prioritized. And length of time homelessness, homeless, is one of those factors that would weigh into your being prioritized for certain permanent supportive housing. So yes, in a roundabout way, but it's not a one-for-one, because folks who are entering permanent supportive housing may be entering directly from the streets, they may not be entering from a shelter. I think that if we were to, and we can do this, if we were to dig a little bit deeper into those stayers of 241-plus, you'd probably see some of the more complex personal issues. You'd see that maybe the, a higher proportion of folks who are elderly, or have long bouts of homelessness, who have multiple disabling conditions. I will say, this is not ideal, but this is not unusual. Shelters across the system are seeing much longer lengths of stay than we, any of us would like.
And I imagine it's attributed to the lack of housing at the next level?
Yes. At the end of the day, that is the number-one barrier for us, being able to move folks out, you know, exacerbated by their own sort of personal needs and challenges. But access to affordable housing is the number-one challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to transition to Sheri Green, my colleague from Behavioral Health Services, to talk about their work. And then if you'd like, Community Health Works Coho would be happy to share some of the work they're doing on the ground. And I'm available for questions as well. Thanks, Sheri.
All right, Sheri, you've seen how curious we can be.
Sheri Green, Division Manager, Behavioral Health Services. I oversee our homeless solutions, and also Children's Mental Health Services. So looking at the data here for... There's two different sections. One is for behavioral health referrals for folks experiencing homelessness in general. And then there are those that are just HART referrals. HART is our homeless engagement and response team. They go out into encampments, and they go out into shelters. Most of the teams are out in the encampments. We only have two people dedicated to the shelters, which I think is important, as I share the data with you. And so all other referrals on the left side, outside of HART, is on the left. And we made contact with 1,360 unhoused residents that were referred to our Behavioral Health Services. And then 69, almost 70% of those, were successfully linked. So they get a referral, which means that they've actually had a conversation with a provider of some sort, which might be walk-ins, could be our core outreach teams, it could be our hospitals, both medical hospitals and our psychiatric hospitals, it could be our mental health urgent care clinic. They will have a conversation with the client at that time. The client says, yes, I'm ready to enroll. If you think about those referral sources, the urgent care clinic, folks are in crisis. Hospital, folks are in crisis, either medical or psychiatric. Those are usually when people are hitting rock bottom, or they're having some sort of moment where they're feeling motivated to change in their lives. And so they're saying yes. 1,360 are saying, yes, enroll me in some services, get me a referral. And then 70% of them show up and start getting those services. And then on the right side is just our HART. So we like to start at the top, which is a little different. These are folks that we don't know their name. They say, I'm not interested in talking to you. We give them a bottle of water, we give them some hygiene supplies, anything to open the door, build the rapport, get FaceTime with them, anything that we can do. Of those 1,600, 342 agreed to be referred into Behavioral Health Services, which means they were willing to give us their name, they were willing to engage in the programming of HART, to be seen regularly, and to be referred into an outpatient program. And then of those 342, 50% of them, or 171, showed up to their appointments and began receiving the services. If we break down the referred numbers there on the right, the 342 of those, Greater SAC was 12%. But the larger numbers were actually, in our partnership agreement, our city teams, 37% agreed to be referred to services. And then that small shelter team that I talked about earlier, almost 32% of the referrals came from just those two people. And we have seen this data be consistent over time. Now, HART is a fairly new team, but the data has told a very similar story over the months, which is, when folks are in a safe place, they're then more willing to engage in the mental health conversations or the substance use conversations. So we have more success getting folks to say yes to us and engaging with us. And then when it comes to actually showing up, 33, almost 33% were from our partnership agreement teams, and 34% showed up from our shelter team referrals. And we do also have what's called community-based referrals. Folsom Police Department is a big utilizer of our community-based referral system, which is calling our warm line, sending in electronic referrals through our online system, sending us e-faxes. And then we'll coordinate directly with those referring parties to then engage specifically. It's a really targeted approach, using the community-based referrals.
Can I, before you leave the slide here?
Yeah.
The second bullet down on the right-hand box there, where it says Greater SAC 43, All Others 299, which is referring to the referred-to-BH services number, what, how do we interpret that? What does that mean, Greater SAC 43?
Greater SAC are the unincorporated county-controlled properties. And then we have our city, our community-based referrals, which are the faxed ones. And then we have our shelters. So the All Others were the ones that I was breaking down for you verbally.
But that, so that, those All Others, the 300, the vast majority, those are the, just the municipalities within the county?
No, not necessarily. We have SAC City, which was 30...
Well, that's one.
Let me put my glasses on here. 37%. 18.4% were the community-based referrals, and 32% were the shelters.
I guess what I'm not, I'm sorry, I guess what I'm not understanding is that the term Greater SAC refers, or implies, that this is a geographic breakdown. So I don't know what it means. Does All Others mean the cities within just Sacramento County? Does it mean jurisdictions outside of the county? Greater SAC is a referral generally to our region. So I'm trying to understand that.
Yes, I apologize, I was misunderstanding your question. So the engagement teams, the encampment teams are out everywhere in the county. And we break them down by either being in the city, or being everywhere else besides SAC City. So that's the Greater SAC. And then the All Others breaks it down by shelter, community-based referrals, and city of SAC.
Okay, so maybe the more appropriate then descriptor is just unincorporated, incorporated, right?
We can rename it, yeah.
Well, that's kind of the language we speak here, but that's what I was finding confusing. So the All Others is just the city of Sacramento?
No, All Others includes the city, our community-based referrals, and our shelter teams.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, it's confusing. I'm sorry.
Supervisor Serna, we'd be happy to break it. I understand what you're asking for, and we'll break it down. And when we send information back out to the board, clarifying some other things, we'll break it down differently for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions there? Okay. Let's see, where did I leave off here? So moving on to our next slide. Yes. And then we have our full-service partnership programming. I think it's worth mentioning that we had 95% utilization of our full-service partnership programming in the last reporting periods from July to December. Of those that were served in our full-service partnership, which is our highest-intensity outpatient system for mental health, 76% were housed. And then 11% were living in shelters, which includes shelters, our bridge housing, Behavioral Health Bridge Housing, BHBH, or hotel-motel stays that our providers are paying for. And 9%, a little over 9%, were still experiencing homelessness, or were re-entering homelessness. It's not uncommon for folks at this very high acuity, lower functioning level, to be housed or be in a shelter and then exit themselves without letting anybody know. So coming in and out of homelessness, or destroying a hotel room and being required to exit, and then having to also find folks, will, they'll be referred, they'll show up for that first appointment, and then they disappear. And then our providers are really diligent at actually going out and walking along the river, and walking at the last-known location, trying to find the clients. They'll also do a BOLO with our HART team to see if our HART team has made contact with the client as well. And that, I think, covers my two slides.
Any other questions?
I have comments.
Thank you. Oh, Supervisor Desmond.
I do have a quick question. Thank you, Sheri, for your slides. And are we getting into presentation also from the city, or is this going to be it on there?
We weren't planning on having a presentation, but Brian is happy to answer any questions as is Coho.
I may have a question. But Sheri, before you go, so on the FSPs, I mean, I think these full-service partnerships have been a game-changer, obviously, for a lot of people. And it was a big topic of discussion in the context of the city-county partnership agreement. And maybe you can comment on that a little bit, Siobhan. But also, can you comment on, I mean, obviously, we're 95% of our total capacity with these current FSP slots. Can you address that as well?
No, I'd like to. Thank you. So I will say that especially during the partnership agreement design, we did commit to adding slots as we need them. And so unlike fixed shelter bed capacity, where, you know, it takes time and more money to develop those, Behavioral Health can flex up their full-service partnerships as needed. So it would take coming back to the board to do that, but we can do that as necessary.
Okay. I appreciate that, because, and I wanted to make sure that was clear to people listening today, that, hey, we're at 95% of total capacity, we can get more slots as the need arises. And then the other thing, Sheri, I just think it's, thank you for your work. It's just, it's incredible. And I think really want to, we should underscore to folks that our work for Behavioral Health is not just limited to county-run shelters, right? I mean, it's shelters everywhere they are in the county, including those operated by the city of Sacramento. Because that was also another, that was a big discussion with the city-county partnership agreement, making sure the county commits to providing certain, not running the shelters per se in the city, but committing to these services that we're providing in the city shelters. So I appreciate you highlighting your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is the end of our presentation. As I said, Coho was here, our friend Brian is here. I might be answering any questions, but otherwise?
Great, thank you, Emily. Supervisor Desmond.
I have a question for Brian, if you don't mind. Brian?
And a comment.
What?
Good afternoon. Brian Pedro, City of Sacramento, Department of Community Response Director.
As we've mentioned many times, Brian, your City of Sacramento officials are welcome in our chambers here to have these kinds of discussions. So thank you for being here today.
Of course.
I want, you and I have had a couple discussions about the Outreach and Engagement Center on Auburn Boulevard near Watt Avenue. And we had had discussions about this in the, during some of the two-by-two discussions in the past as well. And I want to thank you for your report to me about, I think, some of the new beds that have been added there are reserved for families. Can you talk to me a little bit about just kind of what your efforts are, and what your, what the plan is going forward?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of discussion on the Outreach and Engagement Center, though we see, about changing that from a respite site into a families-only. As you said, we did expand the one room we separated out for families-only, so that expanded us another 25 individuals to be able to accept in there. We are looking at converting the whole thing to family-only. Our hurdle on that is that's our respite center, so we're going to have to determine where we would place respite, because we'd be losing respite. To change that, because it's a 23-hour stay, it would be instantaneous when we decide to make that change.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. And I'm looking at Siobhan and Emily. I've had these discussions with you. Maybe something to consider is once Watt Avenue comes online, which will have a very large capacity for respite, if I'm not mistaken. That might be an occasion to relook at this.
Definitely happy to, just noting that the Watt capacity for respite is the same as the capacity we have at WETIC right now, it's 75 beds currently planned. But definitely happy to work with the city if that's a more appropriate use for OEC.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Brian. And the reason, again, this has come up in the past, and coming up, I'm bringing it up again today, is because it's obviously a unique location, being next to the children's receiving home, and some of these other issues. So, and I think we do have a need for family-specific shelters as well. So, thank you, Brian.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, I first want to say to staff, thank you very much for the presentation and for the information. I think it has been very helpful to understand the issue of homelessness, just overall. I also appreciate this workshop, and to be able to just hear some of the things that have happened the past six months. But also, you asked for recommendations and ideas and input, and so I want to be able to take this opportunity to share some of what I feel about where we are today. And this is not to impugn anyone's work in the past, it's just, as a newbie, I get to look at things sort of on the objective level, and I just want to share that. So in the staff report, it said homelessness remains one of the most pressing issues facing the Sacramento region. But if you ask most people in Sacramento, they're going to tell you that the number-one issue that is, you know, impacting our quality of life is homelessness. And just from my observations, and also as an experience being on a city council that is in Sacramento County, the system is broken, it's fragmented, and we work in silos. And this feeds, that every jurisdiction is attempting to figure out homelessness on their own, and there's probably no doubt that there are overlapping processes with that. I'm not assured today that we have the best plan in place for the problem that we are facing. We have had, it's been sort of the similar structure for about 14 years, and the problem has gotten worse year after year. I believe by now, it should be somewhat of a better, well-oiled machine to be able to tackle the issues that we're experiencing. I'm also not assured that we have the best practices in place for the shelters, and nor do I know how they're performing and the outcomes that are happening with our shelters. I'm such a big believer, and this is really, I got this from working in the corporate world, and working around, you know, with lean, is that we cannot manage what we don't measure. And so when we, when we don't have the data to be able to make better decisions, that becomes part of the problem. One of the biggest concerns I have right now is that we don't have a strategy plan for the prevention of homelessness, which means that we're going to continue to see people fall into homelessness, and, which is going to have an impact of the current, where we currently are. I am really encouraged that there is a plan to do some collaboration with the county partners, and that's the City of Sacramento, all the cities within the county, and the actual county. I'm a believer that as elected officials... I'm a believer that as elected officials, we are primarily responsible for giving direction on what is happening long-term, and really to demand results. There are, you know, when I pulled that report of those that are dying in the street, we've had, oh gosh, if I pronounced correctly, 1,200 people that have died in the streets due to homelessness, and so, that is something that should be very resounding to all of us. I believe that we need to identify the bottlenecks and the pain points and the process to get people into shelters, and if it's housing, then what are we doing about being able to create more housing for those people that have the greatest needs? I'm a big data person, and I believe that data should be driving many of the decisions that we make, and so, having data that allows us to make better decisions, I think, is crucial at this time. Again, I want to say that I'm really encouraged by the partnerships. I've met with Kevin McCarty and some of the other council members, and I've just had some really good conversations about the potential to be able to come together and make decisions in a collaborative way, instead of making silos, where in silos, we make decisions for our jurisdictions, but we oftentimes don't have the unintended consequences that it has in other areas of the county. And, you know, I'm gonna really support a regional approach to this problem. I think that, you know, when we look at homelessness, there's a lot of, I think, a lot of really difficult things that we need to face as elected officials, but at the end of the day, almost every elected official that I have followed in the county has mentioned homelessness as one of the issues that is the top reason of what is driving them into to run for office. So, I just want to share that, you know, I, you know, as a newbie, you get to look at things sort of objectively, and I think that there is a lot of work before us. I think that this is something that really needs more constant attention. If it were up to me, it would be, you know, just a bi-weekly meeting and looking at, what are some of the strategies that we want to look at, identify, and then really make it just really a focal point. Just want to share that. But again, I do want to thank the staff that have worked on it, and the individuals that have worked on this problem for many years in the past. But it is a very broken system, and I'm encouraged about some of the potential coming down the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have a little different perspective. I think, I think we have made tremendous strides and a lot of improvement, and I want to thank staff, Siobhan, Emily, Brian from the City of Sacramento, Sheri, Tim, our behavioral health folks. We've, in terms of coordination, dramatic improvement in coordination with the city, coordination with the City of Sacramento, which is where the vast majority of the unsheltered population is. Totally agree, we need more of a county-wide approach, and I know we're working on that very thing right now. Capacity, we are improving capacity with our shelter capacity, not nearly enough, and we know that, which is why we're trying so hard to bring on more shelter capacity and more capacity along the housing continuum and the behavioral health continuum. But I think in all those areas, we have made a lot of progress, and we cannot take our foot off the gas when it comes to capacity, because you can have all the coordination in the world, if you don't have more capacity, it's not gonna get you anywhere. And then, in terms of, I think we all realize that there is a group of unsheltered who are very difficult to get placed, because of their addiction issues, because of their behavioral health issues. There are some new tools we have at our disposal, Laura's Law, Care Court, SB 43 implementation, which is gonna be coming. None of those are gonna be a silver bullet, and at times, that intervention, sometimes there has to be an intervention, or at least pressure from law enforcement. I know a lot of people don't like to hear that, but sometimes, that kind of pushes people to take advantage of something that we're offering them. But again, we have to have that something in place to begin with. So, I agree with Supervisor Rodriguez on a lot of points in terms of improving our approach county-wide, with all the cities, not just the City of Sacramento, and improving some of the systems-related issues. You know, I know Lisa, thank you for being here. Lisa, I want to call out Sacramento Steps Forward as well, for your help. I know we've, we've all struggled mightily with improving coordinated access, improving 2-1-1, improving HMIS. That work has to continue, because I think when you see some of the silos and some of the difficult communication issues among the stakeholders out there, that is a big challenge. But it's an inherent challenge, I think, when you're bringing together different jurisdictions and different stakeholders in any public policy issue that you're addressing. I like to go out occasionally with the Sheriff's Hot Team, and certainly talk with our KoheWu folks. I'm looking forward to a four-hour ride-along I have coming up next week with Rachel and Emily Schop and the Hot Team, because I really like to see, okay, with some of these challenges we're seeing with silos and lack of communication, show me how that's happening in real time. And then I can come back to Emily and Siobhan, or maybe even call them from out there, and say, hey, this is what we're experiencing, can we fix this right now? But I think that's really important, to do that as well. So, I just want to thank all of you. This is a huge priority for this board, it has been for a long time, and I think we're, we have a lot more work to do, but we're certainly heading in a better direction.
Thank you. I know Supervisor Kennedy's in the queue, and certainly want to hear his remarks and perhaps statements on this important matter, but I'm gonna take the chair's prerogative and jump in here, and just say I agree with everything that Supervisor Desmond just said, and I appreciate the supervisor reminding us, listing for us, all the various angles that we have right now in place. And I would just go as far as to say, you know, I think when our newest member of the board joined us, we knew that there'd be days where we disagree, and this is one of those days. I couldn't disagree more with the statement that it's broken. And maybe that's attributable to, as was acknowledged, newness on the board. If you were here five years ago, and looked at this challenge, this immense challenge that we have, undoubtedly the greatest hurdle that we have as policymakers and as a local government constrained with finite resources, that it's very different today than it was then. And, you know, I give a great deal of credit to my colleagues, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Kennedy, who have been our representatives, engaged with the City of Sacramento, working with Emily and others on developing the partnership there, partnership agreement. That was a bit of a game-changer, I would say. That is evolving, as was acknowledged today by staff. So, it's not broken at all, and I would, again, express my pride in being a small part associated with the fact that this board and our executive team, and our partners outside of the county have gone over and above to think differently, do differently, try and circumnavigate the complexities of what in large part is a combination of human nature and behavioral health, and mental health, and, you know, substance use disorder, economic challenges, lack of housing. So many things contribute to the circumstance of homelessness. It's not ever gonna be one agency, it's not ever gonna be one nonprofit, it's never gonna be one city or one county. It's gonna have to be a very concerted, thoughtful, combined effort. So, I would say, please, keep doing what you're doing, and, of course, we all want to make sure we understand to a person that there's always room for improvement. But again, we have what we have to work with, and I think we've appropriately prioritized this, and it's reflective in the data. That's why you had a lot of questions from me and others about data, and maybe acquiring even in greater detail some of that, those numbers and figures, so that we have a better grasp on the nature of our progress and what needs perhaps more attention. But again, I'm just very proud of this board and of our staff and our partners for really, really doing what is necessary to get people out of the circumstance of homelessness.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. Appreciate your comments, appreciate your comments, Supervisor Desmond. You made my comments much shorter, because you covered a lot of ground there, and you were dead-on, both of you. I will say a couple of things, and just give you an anecdotal story. I remember about eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, when I was walking precincts and knocking on doors for another candidate with that candidate, who was running for office at the time, and the neighbors would say, you know, what about this homelessness? And that particular candidate would say, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, taken care of in the next five years. And I would cringe every time, because we knew that that wasn't possible, that the problem was far too severe, and we didn't have the tools at hand. We have so many more tools, as Supervisor Desmond stated, now that we have not had before, and we're, I now feel, unlike I did at that time, I don't cringe, because I do feel that we're starting to see results, we're going to see results, based upon the fact that we do have tools, and we do have processes in place. We didn't even have a Department of Homeless Services back then. And so, you know, we've made tremendous strides, so come out with a hashtag "it's broken" kind of is infuriating to me, because of the great work that is being done, and the progress that we have made and are being made. Now, am I here to say that we're gonna declare victory? Absolutely not, we're nowhere near there. But we've got things in place that we've never had before, and I think that we're heading in a direction that we've never headed in before, in coordination, we've never seen before, whether it's between the city and the county, or just within county departments. So, you know, I agree 100%. I also want to be, I'm a little leery when I hear, you know, easy things for politicians to say, you know, data-driven decisions. Of course, we want data, and we want data-driven decisions, but I'm telling you, I'm a little bit impatient at this point, in seeing that we've been collecting a lot of data for 12 years. Public's done with data, and the public wants to see that tent, that encampment, not in front of their place of business anymore, to see, not see the garbage in their neighborhoods anymore, you know? So, let's not hang our hat too much on, we need more data. We've got data. You know, what we're doing now is we're putting that data into effect for the first time, and we're starting to see results, and we'll continue to use that data to make more results, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Supervisor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. We've kind of beleaguered this topic, so I won't say too much, but I do want to point out that it wasn't covered specifically in the presentation, but, you know, I was a little dubious back when I think it was Measure O that resulted in the city-county partnership, when that was passed, and some pretty, you know, lofty goals were set out before the two agencies, brass rings, if you will. But I'm happy to report that for the second report in a row, all four pillars within that agreement, that there's a green dot, meaning that we're, you know, at least meeting the minimum thresholds, which, according to the report, has, you know, can be attributable to the dramatic decrease we've seen in the point-in-time count year over year. So, whether it's broken, or whether it's working as intended, remains to be seen, but we are making progress, and that should be applauded. So, I want to just heap on, as my colleagues did, to the praise of the folks that are on the front lines doing the work, so, thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you. So, I, you know, I can only look at what is happening in Sacramento County, and, you know, I apologize if the word "broken" raised some, you know, some emotions, but it is a broken system, and I stand by that. I think that, I agree that there's been a lot of work on this issue, but there's, I think, a lot of work to be done moving forward, and, you know, I'm really interested in what is holding us back from being able to get people into housing, and how much housing, how much housing do we have to create to get some of these individuals off? You know, I'm not gonna speak to something that is probably gonna create maybe, maybe a little more angst in people. Over the weekend, I was reading an article on, you know, the refugees that had come to the Sacramento area, and then it raised, it raised just a lot of questions. I understand we have worldwide issues, I totally get that, and we want to be a help to people that are in great need. But when I look at the streets, and I drive around, and I see individuals who are homeless, and we have something in the plus 6,000 range off of a pick count, which could potentially be more, I look at a system that says, are we prioritizing the people who are here unhoused to be able to get them into housing? And so, you know, I certainly don't mean it to be offensive to people, but it's just the way that I feel, and it has nothing to do with the incredible staff that we have, or, it's not that, it's just, I think, where we are today, I see things maybe a little different, and so, it's not, you know, I think, I hope this is one of those situations where we can agree to disagree. Thank you.
Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you all for your comments, but also recognize all the staff that, and all the work that folks have been doing. They have a tremendous amount of dedication towards this, not only with Emily and her team, but also with Sheri and Tim from Department of Health Services and Behavioral Health Services. They do a fantastic job out there. We are working on a couple of things as it relates to governments, governance, and I think when you talk about a broken system, I think you're thinking overall. I don't believe it's directed directly to the county and the county staff.
No, it's overall.
And, so, we do have some governance things coming forward. Also, like to thank the board for the incredible investment that you've made. We've opened up Power Inn and Florin' and Power Inn with a whole host of shelters there. We have East Parkway, and we made a tremendous investment in Watt Avenue, and we're looking forward to that coming up online soon. So, overall, I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you for your comments and your praise to the county staff, and I would just like to also convey my appreciation for all the work that the county staff are doing, so. And again, more things are coming, and we'll have some additional things for you guys to chew on, and hopefully some data. Oh, the last thing I would add is Supervisor Desmond mentioned a ride-along. Staff are always welcome for folks to come, whether it's the Hot Team, the ride-alongs with KoheWu, or coming to our shelters, or any other thing that's out there that you feel that you need to get more data on or more information on, we're more than happy to. I know Supervisor Rodriguez, we have a meeting, I think, tomorrow, for a couple of hours to talk about homelessness, that's on top of the couple of hours we've already done, so hopefully we can share as much information as you need, and get you the data that you feel you need, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I appreciate the answers to the 20-plus questions that I submitted. Thank you.
And I would encourage, ride-alongs, not just the Hot Team, but in particular, with our park rangers, regional park rangers, specifically in District 1, and in that part of the American River Parkway that is in District 1, basically from Sac State downstream.
Right. And I'm going off of just my memory here, there's a whole, I'm sure we can fill your week with ride-alongs and activities to get you more on the ground, if you will, with all the homeless service and mental health services and the other services that the county offers, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I think staff likes nothing more than a request from a supervisor to come do a ride-along with them, so please.
Well, I'm fortunate that my back's to them, so I'm okay offering that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Villanueva. Madam Clerk, do we have members of the public that are signed up to speak on this matter?
Do not.
Okay. This was an update, right? This is just a report, no action?
That's correct.
So, again, thanks to everyone, including representatives from the city, Sacramento Steps Forward, behavioral health, everyone that presented, thank you again for all the valued information. So, on to the next item, please.
Item number 36 is the street medicine in Sacramento County.
All right, I've been looking forward to this one.
I'd like to state that the mobile medical clinic as well, if you'd like to do a ride-along, we're more than happy to accommodate, for sure.
Sign me up.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As you can see, I have a team of individuals with me. Chair Serna, Vice Chair Rodriguez, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about mobile street medicine services. As you can see behind me, this is a coordinated effort, a collaborative effort, in concert with not just UC Davis providers, but also with Elica Health Centers and One Community Health. There certainly has been a movement within our primary care clinic. Let me tell you who I am, Noel Vargas, Primary Health Services Deputy Director. Under my purview, I have Correctional Health Services, which is the youth detention facility, adult correctional health, I'm not here for adult correctional health, primary care clinic, and also mobile medicine, which is the mobile clinic. is the mobile clinic. We initially started with a slide deck of about 45 pages, and we had to whittle that down, given the amount of individuals that are coming up to talk. So Vice Chair Rodriguez, I will tell you, we are a little short on the data and the information, but we can certainly get information at your request. So it's just high-level mission goals, current, future state, collaboration, challenges, and solutions. I'm going to be a bit brief, so I can allow Elica and One Community to give their presentations, and then for Q and A thereafter. A little bit about the mission and goals, obviously a partnership in community organizations, talking about wellness without walls. It's comprehensive, collaborative, compassionate healthcare, in concert with, obviously, other FQHCs and clinics. You know, our outreach is to the streets, encampments, and temporary housing. We do work in concert with Kohiwu, UC Davis, obviously a big partner in that. Some of the goals that we define, you know, inequities in healthcare, reducing said inequities to healthcare and access for those experiencing homelessness. And then also, people with lived experience. In our outreach, in the various areas, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, is actually getting feedback on how we can improve our quality of services and those outcomes. And so that's obviously a discussion with individuals with lived experience. And again, the partnerships with community and governmental agencies, not just within Department of Health Services, but our DISH partners as well, and our sister divisions within Behavioral Health Services included, and public health, who could not be here today, so I'm presenting on their behalf. And then obviously, resources and guidance towards evidence-based substance abuse disorder treatment, which has been something that's been on our radar, in particular, when we look at CalAim Prop 47, connections to the primary care clinic for those justice involved.
Before you leave the slide.
Sure.
I'm going to look to Siobhan. Is that the long-awaited van?
No, this is our van, but the long-awaited One Community van, I think they'll present on that.
Okay, all right. Hopefully, there's another van slide here.
I think this is the only van slide, but we can certainly follow up with any questions about that van.
All right.
Well, I will have Dr. Orsalak come up at some point. She's here to answer any clinical questions that I cannot answer, or anything else related to street medicine. So some of the mobile street medicine services, acute urgent care evaluations, that's a, you know, kind of a holistic approach, whole-person care, multidisciplinary team approach to healthcare for street medicine, longitudinal primary care visits. A lot of folks ask, what does longitudinal mean? Really, it's a holistic approach with treatment in mind as the end game. STI testing, sexually transmitted infection, immunizations, medication administration, and then, of course, housing, health insurance. We work in concert with Kohiwu. We have three sites that we, we hit out in the community, and I believe that's Northgate Township 9 and Howe River Access. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Orsalak. Kohiwu has been an absolutely wonderful partner, not only within the primary care clinic, but also for street medicine. That is our van. There is a link that'll actually show a schedule of where we go. Aside from the three locations that I named, we also, we hit various other pockets, that would be Safe Stay, Florin, looking to expand strategically where there is a need, and that, again, is in concert with our Behavioral Health Services team, and then our community-based partners. Just real quick, for those, the mobile clinic is actually an extension of the primary care clinic, which is the federally qualified health center. HERSA gives us that designation, and so by extension, we are a satellite site.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
What are some of the most common treatments that patients, you know, receive in this mobile unit?
I'm going to ask Dr. Orsalak to come and answer that question.
Hello. Hi. I'm Kay Orsalak. And yes, I am one of the physicians on the mobile medical unit. I'm a family medicine physician, and also an addiction medicine physician. And I care for people living with HIV at the sexual health clinic as well. So really, all of those things. I think the most common conditions that we see are the most common conditions I also see at our FQHC, which is high blood pressure, diabetes, and congestive heart failure, COPD. We do have higher rates probably of substance use disorder and mental health conditions as well, that we treat as well. And because we do rapid HIV, syphilis, and hepatitis C testing, we do see high, higher rates of hepatitis C and HIV. So we've had multiple new diagnoses of hepatitis C and HIV that have been, and syphilis, that have been plugged into treatment and through our outreach to the mobile medical unit.
Do you, can you go as far as, because I've heard now several times, it's an extension of the, of the, you know, our brick-and-mortar clinic. Can you go as far as to administer or offer buprenorphine and vivitrol and?
Yes. This is, I, yes, absolutely. So I am board certified in addiction medicine, and we do have a partnership. I also am faculty at UC Davis. And so we work our addiction medicine fellows, and we are increasing our numbers of buprenorphine. It's been, we do have these numbers, but antecdotally, actually, the number one substance use disorder is nicotine. So I think we see the most of tobacco use, and then methamphetamine, second to that, and have been doing buprenorphine for folks, a smaller number of folks. But yes, we are doing treatment for substance use disorders.
And not to get too in the weeds here, but I think for the longest time, in terms of STI activity in the county, chlamydia has been a real problem. You mentioned syphilis and HIV, but what about chlamydia? Is that something that is still, like, off the charts for Sacramento County? Are we treating it here as well?
Yes. I don't have the data, the Sacramento County data, but I do know that we carry treatment for penicillin onsite on the RV. We carry, and treatment for gonorrhea and chlamydia. So we are doing treatment for all of those sexually transmitted infections onsite when people ask them. And then a lot of times, with the risk and benefits discussion, doing things like presumptive treatment. So there's not, we do not have a rapid test for gonorrhea and chlamydia, but if someone is symptomatic, then we will offer the treatment for them immediately.
And can you do referrals to specialists from the, from the vehicle?
Yes. So that is a little bit more complicated. Because of the geographic managed care system in Sacramento, the referrals have to come from someone's established primary care physician. And so sometimes, there's folks, so I have been going to Northgate since 2022. And so I have a panel of patients who I see in that area, who I do manage their specialty care, and have been able to get them into, like, our clinic for HIV care. Happy to report, we successfully treated our first patient mobily for hepatitis C who completed their treatment, got into housing as well during that time. And so we do have panel. And so if someone is assigned to the Sacramento County FQHC, we can refer out. And if not, we meet regularly with our other street medicine partners, every other week, with the folks who are providing care in Sacramento County, and are working on building those connections within our street medicine team, so I can connect with folks who are their PCPs.
Okay. And I assume you can do things like open wound care and those types of things?
Yes, wound care, hypertension management. We carry assorted medications onsite that have been kind of the highest yields. So we have blood pressure medications. So if someone is interested in starting high blood pressure medications, we can hand them as they walk out the door with starting that, and seen some success with that. We do a lot of nicotine replacement therapy, a lot of interest, treating for mild to moderate behavioral health, depression, anxiety, pretty much full, full scope.
So they're sometimes walking out of this van with a script in hand?
Yes, yes, yes. So we carry scripts for antibiotics and blood pressure, and a couple other, a couple other things. But if not, we work with pharmacies who deliver to shelters, if they're in the shelter, or some of our pharmacies will deliver to general encampment locations, which has been a great, a great partnership.
Does the van, or does the, more importantly, the people in the van, does the operation join with other county activities on our homeless front? So would they go out with the hot team?
We do talk about with the hot team. We picked our spots, initially, Northgate, Howe, and Township 9, those outreach spots, in partnership with Community Health Works and the Parkway Outreach Team. And so they hold their Parkway office hours during the same times we decided to go. So we are working with community health workers, and then the hard team is sometimes there as well. Yes.
And if I could, that's a great question, Chair Serna. We actually have met with the Behavioral Health Services team about synergies and opportunities to go out, Safe Stay locations. So it would be a concerted effort from a county standpoint.
So you mentioned some locations, both inside and outside the unincorporated area. Have you looked into, and what it doesn't make any sense, that you might explore a partnership with, say, Animal Care and Control? So we, they have a mobile unit. Oftentimes, people have pets in need, as well as their own physical behavioral health care. Have you looked at maybe, you know, maybe not on a super regular basis, but once in a while, making use of both mobile units to kind of get a twofer for, for folks that have beloved animals with them?
That's a great idea. I don't think we have, and we certainly can follow up and do so.
Okay, just a thought.
Sure.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
I just want to say, I'm a big fan of the mobile, the mobile medical van. In the past, I've done, I've gone out on ride-alongs into homeless encampments, and I've gone with nonprofits out into the encampments. And one of the things that always surprised me was the usage of emergency rooms for some basic needs when it came to healthcare. And so this, I hope you're supported by the major healthcare organizations, because what this will do is help prevent people from going into the emergency room for high blood pressure medication. So I do appreciate this. The other one is, what success do you have with follow-up care? Because you mentioned that you will connect with somebody, but then, do you actually get success with follow-up care with individuals who are in camps, who may not be there the next time you come around? Or do they come to you?
Yes, absolutely. And when we were initially designing this program, there, and you'll hear from, from other programs with different designs, it's kind of the balance of, do you have consistency, and you do, do you go to the same spot every time, and do we park the mobile unit at the same spot? Or do we do kind of more directed outreach, and kind of individual-based? We elected to go to the same locations, kind of to, to address that. So I have been parking at Northgate every other Tuesday from 8:00 to 12:00 for, like, the last three years of my life. And so folks know that that's where we're going to be, and know that we can come there. And so, yes, there have been, been able to build the biggest panel there, where we've been kind of more consistent. And yes, just to say, the biggest, and the biggest barriers are when, you know, encampments are moved, and when people are moved. And that is, then people get moved out of the area and having to follow up. But we make sure they know that they have our calendar and where we are to connect to services.
So when you give a prescription for a medication, and they go to the pharmacy to fill it, how do they, how do, how do they not end up with this financial burden? Because, you know, I mean, do you check if they have Medi-Cal, and then if Medi-Cal, that it'll cover it? Okay.
We do. And I think those are one of the challenges that we'll talk about, is for those who are not on Medi-Cal, or maybe their Medi-Cal's discontinued, that's where we work with Kohiwu, to really get those individuals back on a Medi-Cal, to ensure that they're not paying out of pocket. And can certainly go to our pharmacy within the primary care clinic, but if there's somewhere that's more adjacent, closer, obviously, that'd be an ideal situation.
Thank you.
It's a great question. Thank you. All right. So, you know, just future state for mobile and street medicine, you know, looking at additional locations, and then obviously with some suggestion, looking at partnering with other agencies, increasing the number of street medicine service days. We are currently talking with our Behavioral Health Service Sister Division, and also with UC Davis School of Nursing, about expanding services in the scope of street medicine, also enhance ECM, enhanced case management, and community support services through Kohiwu. And then obviously, partnerships with county, city, and community organizations. Really, I will tell you, from a, you know, an FQHC primary care clinic standpoint, it's really forging relationship with our FQHC partners, which is why they are here. That certainly has been beneficial to us and to our patients. Highlighting the community partners there, and then the potential for others, the hard team being one, other CBOs, and then street medicine providers within the state of California. Some of the challenges, and some of the questions that have come up here for street medicine, is breaking down those silos, you know, working in, in partnership with each other. Medi-Cal resources restrictive, and many clients who do not meet the criteria for Medi-Cal, which is most do, if not all. And so it's just really connecting them, getting back on the Medi-Cal. And not just for medications and medical care, but for all the other services within the county. Some of the other challenges, specialty care referrals, uninsured clients, patients, there is a process by which patients are assigned to the primary care clinic, but nonetheless, we can work with them to get assigned to a clinic if it's not our own. And then billing and funding for services. HERSA does provide grants and funding. That's how we purchased the medical clinic, was through a HERSA grant. And then consistent follow-up with, with patients with constraints and uncertainty with, with homeless encampments that move. It makes it difficult to track and follow. Some of the opportunities and solutions, you know, you talked, we talked about homeless services, city sheriff, homeless, animal control could be added to that list as well. You know, continued need for collaboration, and then more grant funding opportunities. And I'm going to hand it over to Elica Health Centers, who's going to talk about their street medicine.
Hello. My name is Margrethe. I'm from Elica Health Centers. This is our Associate Director for Mobile and Street Medicine, Alexander Porto. We're going to briefly present on our mobile and street program, and what we have done in 2024. So we have been out in the community provider, providing health and views and street medicine for 10 years. To date, we have three medical mobile units and one dental mobile unit. Some of our services in primary care are focused on mostly youth and adults. Our long-term partnership is with first-step communities, where we see a lot of youth and adults. We provide primary care, wound care, referrals, health education, connecting to CalAim services, and other community resources, as well as connecting them to health insurance coverage. As an FQHC, we have programs for the uninsured. So if we see unhoused patients or children used in our mobile clinics, we have programs available to them that result in zero payment for their visit, and may also result in zero payment for their prescription. We work with partner pharmacies that can accept our programs, and also deliver wherever they are. So they can only provide an address as a street corner. They don't have to have a home address to get a prescription delivered. So the goal of the Health and Views is meeting the patients where they are, and addressing their mistrust in the system. And this is why we try to be at the same site every week on the same day, such as with our first-steps communities, where we see a lot of returning patients. So we offer both walk-in and scheduled appointments on our mobile site, so we can have follow-ups. We have patients knowing that we'll be there next week, the week after, a month after, and that they can rely on us. And then they can either continue with us if we are their PCP, or we can help them connect to their primary care provider, whoever it may be. We also use our mobile services as an opportunity to educate future providers, as in family nurse practitioners and physician assistants. In 2024, we had over 3,400 visits in our mobile clinics for primary care alone. Our services and the calendar of the services are always available on our website for the community. In addition, we have vaccine clinics and dental clinics. Those are school-based services that we provide. Currently, we partner with San Juan, Robla, and Twin River School Districts. We are also going out, starting from next week, to Getaway Community Charters to offer vaccine clinics as well. The vaccine clinics we're offering are made possible through a grant through the Sacramento County Health Department. The funding is really limited. It's only for one year. We started in, the grant started in July, our clinic started in August, and the funding is running out in June of this year. The funding is under the COVID vaccination grant that the county received. We, as far as we know, we don't see any continuation of funding for this program. However, we have received some feedback from the schools, and we're looking to receive some more formal feedback on how the vaccine clinics impacted enrollment. Some anecdotal feedback that we're receiving from school staff is that it increased enrollment for unhoused youth, and for the for unhoused youth and for the immigrant community, and not just enrolling, but enrolling on time as well. And we have vaccinated over 1,000 children just during the reporting period that we're providing, which is August through, August of last year to January of this year. We have some limited dental service at schools. There's not much, not a big number to report on that, but dental service for elementary school kids is also important for their enrollment and also for their nutrition overall, because if they cannot eat, they cannot learn.
Well, our street medicine unit has been active for 10 years. One of the advantages of the way we've been doing it is we've been able to visit the patients directly at their encampments and their sites and their homes. So this means that when a patient has been moved, when we hear about a new, a new place that people need services, we're able to go and meet them where the need is, right? Now, you asked some questions about what services are provided, and we provide essentially the same services that MJ was talking about, Dr. Orsak. What I see is, to Supervisor Rodriguez's point, that a lot of people may go to the emergency department for non-emergency issues. This is one way to address those issues before they need to go in or prevent the need to go, you know, unwittingly due to a problem that could be managed outpatient, right? So, for example, you know, seeing a patient for the first time and finding out that, you know, on blood testing, they have anemia, or they have diabetes, or with vital signs, they have, you know, pretty high hypertension. We can get these issues controlled before they become a bigger problem, right? So a lot of the patients that we see in this way are unable to leave their sites, you know, due to injury, illness, and sometimes transportation, you know? So there's a big advantage to go and seeing them where they are. Also, you know, a big problem, of course, is security, and a lot of people are afraid to leave their stuff because it may be stolen or it may be cleared while they're not there. And then they lose pets, they lose medications and all of this stuff. And you can also direct people to sites like Northgate, Township Nine, you know, Howe Access and so forth, because we've only been able to do it one day a week. And unfortunately, right now, we have no funding, so we've had to stop for the time One of our units that still is going out is our veterinary services. So we have a wonderful veterinarian that goes out two days a week, and he, he does cooperative visits and efforts with the county with PAWS, and provides, you know, registration, microchipping, you know, some of these vital services for the pets, which if you've been to homeless encampments, serve a bunch of needs, you know, companionship, warmth, security, and so forth.
So you're telling us the county now is a model to lean on to figure out how to do it?
They do, they do great stuff, I'll tell you. And the services are absolutely wonderful and appreciated by all involved. So we routinely see the same patients, you know, maybe every two weeks, we try to go back and find out how people are doing, whether they need additional services, but we can also redirect to brick and mortar, right? Which is the ideal situation, ideal paradigm, right? So if they can't get into the brick and mortar, though, we do have the ability to go out and meet their needs where they, where they live. Anecdotally, a few cases, you know, there was a patient I saw for nearly a year, you know, treating a wound that just would not heal, you know? Other patients who have been unable to get in to see their primary care provider because of transportation issues, you know, the, the bus or the taxi comes up and just would not pick them up every single time for six months, you know? So they literally can't get in. Anyway, when funding allows us to go out and work, our team, you know, usually comprises of at least four people. More is better, and more opportunity is better, right? So we do have an enhanced care management team and a community healthcare worker team, both of whom have come out with me and collaborated to, you know, get patients access to more services and, and if they need to, you know, get them housing. So, or get them the resources for housing. Any questions?
I have a question. So you mentioned that, you know, the bus doesn't pick them up. What does that mean? Does that mean that the operator does, makes a judgment call and doesn't invite them to, or literally just passes a bus stop? Because there's three of us up here that also serve on the RT Board of Directors, so...
So I've seen cases in which, you know, the patient couldn't get on the bus, couldn't get to the bus when they saw the bus, or...
So they're physically unable?
Physically unable to.
Gotcha.
Or if it was a, you know, an Uber or a Lyft or something like that that was ordered for them, the driver is just driven away.
Or their insurance.
Or their insurance, yeah.
The insurance, they may send transportation services to pick a patient up. We see that in brick and mortar all the time as well, that they may not show up, may not be there on time. And in case with our unhoused population, they may just see where they got to and drive away, just like with Uber and Lyft. They will see where they got to and would not want to serve this person and would drive away.
Because of their parents, because of the fact that they have, maybe they're toting their too many belongings or...
Yes, so simply because they are there unhoused and everything that comes with that and how they may appear to them at that moment.
All right.
There was one case where, you know, I found a patient who had been dropped off at the wrong place and the driver had left, but they didn't know how to get back, they didn't know how to contact the driver. So they were essentially stranded, and we don't have the ability to drive them. So we treated the patient on-site, we got them what they needed, and then I stayed with him until, you know, there was a appropriate transportation.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good discussion about all these additional barriers to people seeking the medical treatment they need. And kind of as an aside, I like the discussion you've had about the implications on our emergency rooms and certainly APOT when it comes to that issue as well, and how our street medicine programs and partnerships really has a positive impact on that APOT issue that we're all experiencing. But first, I just want to thank Elica. I mean, you do amazing work in the community, serving those most at need. I've seen firsthand both the dental vans and the Health on Wheels program. I've heard from administrators and teachers in the schools, how many of the parents of these kids end up using a lot of these resources when you come out of the school? So it's just been, I think, a great program. So, but considering some of the barriers and how much easier it would be to treat people if we can get them into a shelter, as you know, we're going to have a great opportunity to do that on Watt Avenue with a shelter right behind your Elica clinic up there. So I'm just curious, have there been, have you had conversations or about that, about partnering with the county in that shelter once it's up and running?
Internally, at Elica, yes. We are looking to have more discussions with the county about potential partnerships. We have capacity in our mobile clinics. As you may see next to the future site, we have, next to our clinic, a mobile bus parked several times a week. That unit and another unit have capacity several times a week at the moment to serve other sites. So we have capacity right now to be engaged elsewhere or at the future site.
Okay, thank you. I know Supervisor Serna and our, some of our community meetings and meetings with county staff about this, it's very, our hope that we will be able to take advantage of our proximity to Elica to really improve the health of the folks who end up utilizing that shelter. Thank you.
So we've actually talked a little bit about this, about some of the unique determinants of health, the pressure, you know, the imminent danger that each of these patients is experiencing, and the importance to, to get them access to further resources to address some of those things. Why don't you talk about that?
I can finalize on this. So the reason why we brought this up is just to bring up the importance of street medicine, not just having your mobile van go out, but actually teams like our partners here go out on foot and have the capacity in the city among our partner and in the county to, to serve all the members that need to be served, who are unsheltered, actually staying in a tent on the street. Because it's not simple as getting them transportation or someone watching their stuff while they go to an appointment. It's actually many other things that may not be possible for them or important to them at that time. They need to remember what day it is to know they need to go to an appointment, where their right is meeting them, and many, many other things that are taken out of the picture when we bring care to them. And again, the reason why we're bringing this up is that we wanted to say how important it is to keep funding street medicine, that both street medicine and mobile medicine cannot simply be sustained on billing insurances or other reimbursement, such as through HERSA, that there needs to be a fine balance between billing and grant funding in order to bring care out of the brick and mortar, because it simply costs more per visit to go out and provide care.
One more point to that, you were talking about collaborations, community collaborations. And of course, we're always happy to collaborate anytime we have a chance with, you know, county, city, and other organizations. What I had been doing was I'd been going to recycling centers, to places where the homeless population congregates. And, you know, organically, they form to their own community support networks. And with the ability to do something like go out in a smaller vehicle, you can go to these sites and hear directly from them where there is a great need at that time, at that day. And that's how, you know, I would find a large number of my patients, you know? Unless you're nimble and unless you're able to drive and change your plans, that's very difficult to do.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good, thank you. Chair Serna, supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. It's a privilege to stand before you, particularly as I have the personal privilege of being a steward of another critical initiative championed by Chair Serna. This afternoon, on behalf of One Community Health, I'm here to share some updates and early successes of our street medicine program, a program that, with your ongoing support, directly reaches those in our community who are often overlooked, and it translates that advocacy into tangible, life-changing results on the very margins. We are One Community Health, an FQHC with locations in Midtown, Arden, and Carmichael, and it is our mission to empower all people through equitable, quality, patient-centered care. And in July 2024, we began preparing and carefully thought out what our model was going to look like as we prepared for our launch that occurred just earlier this year in January. So this is our team setup. We have an advanced practitioner, a nurse practitioner, I'm messing up the APP acronym, so excuse me, who's provided our care delivery. We also are onboarding a registered nurse to support with triage, phlebotomy, and support and care delivery. We have two community health workers who are out in the field daily doing outreach, intake, and care liaisons, and we are bringing our ACSW to provide behavioral health supports. So rooted in our values of compassion, teamwork, service, and inclusiveness, we offer psychiatry and behavioral health, harm reduction, MAT, medicated, assisted treatment services, primary care, social service coordination, and soon to come will be dental care out in the field.
Shannon, we have a question or statement from Supervisor Rodriguez.
Just a quick question. So when you obtain data out in the field, do you enter that into the HMIS program?
We do. We also use our Epic Healthcare System out in the field as well.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Oops, sorry. No, that's okay. So since our program launch, I've got some of our early data up here, but I think the big ones that I'd like to call out, I mean, we've had 480 outreach kits distributed thus far. Those include things like food, hygiene, cold climate supports, also harm reduction tools. We have 96 patients currently on our community health workers' caseloads. We've re-engaged two patients back into One Community Health HIV services. We have coordinated over 20 Uber health rides. And I think the most exciting thing that we're starting to see is we've supported the coordination, pickup, and delivery of prescriptions for 38 patients. And so not only are we able to carry medications on our team while we're entering into the field, but we can write those scripts if we don't have the medication available. Our community health workers work with our in-house pharmacy team to get those filled and then delivered back to the patients. We've also seen eight patients successfully placed into transitional housing, and this is through a multi-agency collaboration. I think the biggest thing, I had all this other kind of like data points mapped out, but I had the privilege recently to go out with the street team two days in a row, and to see what it actually looks like in action was quite profound. The day really begins with, this is our street program manager, Aubriana Smith, who has really been the backbone and has been critical to our early successes. But Aubriana gets her team together, and they have, you know, what would look traditionally in the brick and mortar, like a team huddle, where they map out where the locations are they're going to visit during that day. And to our partners with Elica, to their point, that does require a certain level of flexibility and ability to be nimble, because that changes at any moment. The first day that we went out, we went to a tiny home village out on Stockton Boulevard, where there were patients who had originally engaged in services when they were living in tents off of Broadway and X Street. And now we're able, with the support of our team, to become stabilized enough to enter into transitional housing. There were about five patients lined up, ready to go. And because of, you know, our team's ability to really engage and develop those relationships, we've seen that we've been able to maintain that consistency and that follow-up with those patients. I think one of the most striking things that day was there was a patient who was newly diagnosed with hepatitis C in the emergency room. And the nurse practitioner, I think, just to see the way that she held space with that patient, who was rightfully emotional, overwhelmed, did not understand the diagnosis, had an adverse experience in the emergency room, the entire visit was focused more on answering questions and, again, holding space and reassuring that patient that we were going to be there, you know, in the following weeks to support him in adhering to treatment and in getting into a more stabilized place. Later that afternoon, we went back to the clinic and had a quick debrief, and then it was, got to go on a ride down Broadway on 26th, where our community health worker was able to identify three different patients, like, oh, that's so-and-so. Funny to see her by herself. I need to go back and check on her. Another thing that popped up, we got a call from Aubriana. We had a patient who had an appointment later that afternoon, but we found that that patient actually had a housing appointment that may have contradicted with the schedule. But this community health worker, you know, went to this patient's tent, was able to kind of tap in, and they had the conversation about what was her priority that day. So really, truly centering the patient's need. And it was determined that it was important for that patient to get their housing appointment taken care of so that she could move into the transitional housing to then support with that regular follow-up for the medical services. I mean, I just appreciated... And I just appreciated the sentiment that the community health worker made at the end was her voice, her choice, which has really been central to the entire project. And then more recently, we have established a partnership with Loaves and Fishes, where every Wednesday, we are there from 8:30 in the morning until 12:30 in the afternoon, supporting patients in Friendship Park, which has been wildly successful, and we've started following a panel of patients there. I think, you know, to dispel a myth, there's a lot of questions that we have received about safety and how are we, you know, engaging in situations that may appear to be high conflict, but I think that what has been really incredible to see is, and this is in part the trust that the team has established, is just that there is an unspoken understanding, and I think something to be said that is quite profound about bringing the humanity back to those that we often pass by when we're driving. So we thank you for the ongoing support. You know, ultimately, our street medicine program is about more than just providing healthcare, it is about restoring dignity and building pathways to stability. And with your continued support, we can ensure that this model of compassionate care reaches even further, transforming lives and strengthening our entire community. So thank you. And I brought you a little present. These are some bracelets that we give out to patients that we encounter or other community members, healthy together on the outside, but they're functional. And on the inside, it has our street medicines direct line where patients can text or call.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
I do have a question. You can give them to... The clerk's assistant right behind you. There you go. She's stealthy that way.
I know. Where are we going?
The question, and this actually goes for everyone we've heard from, and it's a heads up for our Department of Health Services, which I believe we're going to hear from next. Thank you. What I haven't heard so far is how do you, do all of us interact with those that are unhoused that are pregnant and in need of, you know, that unique type of care? And, you know, I know most of the people in front of me know and understand that Planned Parenthood is first and foremost, it's a part of our, it's an important part of our healthcare system that certainly kind of can help in that regard. Do we have a partnership with Planned Parenthood? So maybe someone can speak to that, so the doctor get up, so.
Yes, so I'm a family medicine doctor, so I do prenatal care. And so with, like, like we mentioned, we are a satellite of our FQHC, and so have, it has come up less often than, but have been able to connect folks into prenatal care either through their FQHC, where they've already been established and are assigned, and help kind of navigate that with our community health workers there. Or we have a prenatal clinic at our family medicine clinic as well. And so we were able to do that as well, that's staffed by family medicine physicians.
Are you prepared to, in the mobile units, like, provide vitamins for women that, you know, need that particular type of nutritional attention for their, you know, to enhance their healthy pregnancy, hopefully?
Yeah, definitely. Prenatal vitamins are covered by Medi-Cal, so we don't carry prenatal vitamins. We could, we should. But we are able to write prescriptions and draw lab work, so we're able to do prenatal lab work as well. We obviously do HIV, syphilis, and hepatitis C testing on everybody in gonorrhea and chlamydia. Most folks who come in through the mobile unit, but we are able to get additional blood work and samples and then connect them. I'm trying to think, I have actually not come in contact with a person who has needed that, but I know some of our other coworkers who are working at more of the safe stays have been connecting people back into care.
See another doctor that popped up behind you.
In each case that I've addressed, the most vital thing was getting shelter right away. And we've been able to get them resources immediately. In one case, I think even within the week, and in another case, I was no longer involved after that initial encounter, so I don't know what happened, but they were connected with those resources. Living in the elements would be especially difficult during pregnancy, which is why I believe that's vital.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
Chair Serna, thank you again, board members, for the presentation. Any questions?
Is it?
Nope. There we go.
So that concludes the totality of the presentation?
Yeah, Supervisor Serna, I was just going to mention, so Noel and Dr. Ursilak presented for the, from the county's perspective, and we...
I was simply reading down an order on the right-hand side there, so.
Yeah, no, and so one of the things we are working to do is better integrate the street medicine programs into our overall homeless system of care, as you heard here. So we're looking forward to enhancing those partnerships over time.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Thank you for the presentation. So when it comes to funding, I'm not sure if this is a staff report that I read, that was there ARPA money involved in this? And so what does that look like going forward where there's no more ARPA money?
That's a great question. I think the ARPA money is flowing to one community, as I understand it, and so once that goes away, obviously, some of the, come on, yeah. Funding streams for all street medicine seemingly under attack, and so going away. And so obviously, with that means diminishing services for the homeless community.
One of the things that we're actively working on is establishing contracts with the health plan, so that we can receive reimbursement for the care that we are providing in the field. But also coupling that with the realities that that may not cover the cost of running the program, which we are finding right now with ours, it's, you know, we're looking at a little over a million a year to sustain this. We're looking at a multi-pronged approach, so both those reimbursements, looking at how, you know, we can leverage our onsite pharmacy, but then also exploring other funding opportunities through HERSA, through local initiatives, and of course, leveraging those partnerships and making sure that we are supportive of all of our, you know, colleagues that are in the field, working alongside USC School of Medicine, the KEC School, and their street medicine initiatives, also with the Street Medicine Institute, where we're all working together to learn best practices to inform our sustainability plans. But I think the biggest thing is, and I know, you know, we all, you know, share in the sentiment, is how critical it is going to be to continue to provide these services, and how it, I don't, the right word is escaping me, but just, it's almost worse off to begin services like these and then strip them away from those community members who need the most.
Sustainability is always, you know, we've ran numbers on maintenance for the van, staffing the van, mobile clinics, and so certainly you have to see a set number of patients to stay ahead and meet the demands. And so I think the reimbursements and the number of patients we see in the encounters that are billable aren't enough to sustain the overall maintenance and operations of street medicine, so therein lies the rub.
So we have four, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we have four major health hospital systems in the area that would definitely benefit from having individuals not go use the emergency rooms as preventative services or care, so hopefully there's a partnership and some support.
ED utilization is always at the forefront of what we do, obviously the services that are needed for the homeless, but, but again, we have those discussions all the time about ED utilization and cutting that down.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll just add that the ARPA funding that has been referenced was some that came from District One. Some of the very first things that we discussed was sustainability, because I wanted to make sure that if the county was going to invest and partner with One Community Health in terms of enhancing a street medicine model that was going to be effective, that we're going in with eyes wide open and realizing ARPA is one-time funding. But I think the general sentiment that was shared by both One Community Health and our office was that, well, let's at least have something to talk about, let's have something to design at least and get off the ground. And looked at it, quite frankly, from a capital expense versus operational expense perspective, so that at least you had some new tools, whether it be the mobile units themselves or, you know, other things that could be used as a catalyst to kind of design personnel needs and deployments. So I'm just delighted to see that we're making progress in that respect, and look forward to, again, the day that I can go out and do a ride-along and see for myself all the good work that's being done. Supervisor Kennedy?
Member of the board, absolutely.
Just, I'm going to be a little repetitive here, but I want to, you know, thank Supervisor Serna for what you did with those ARPA funds, that's incredibly important. But for the most part, and anybody out here can answer it most, you know, we made a real concerted effort at utilizing ARPA funds whenever we could for one-time expenses and knowing, and not building on and relying on those going forward as operational expenses. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's...
There's about nine people that can answer that question.
Yes, no, that's very accurate. These were one-time investments. You know, the one thing we are watching very closely is the federal impacts to Medicaid, because a lot of these services that they're talking about will require that sustained funding over time, but we're looking at that closely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public sign up to speak?
Let me check on that really quick. No, we do not have any speakers for this item.
Great, thank you. And again, thanks to everyone who took time to be here with us and present and inform. Job well done, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, please.
Item number 37, receive a second quarter fiscal status report and approve an appropriation adjustment request for various departments.
Good afternoon, Chair Serna, board members. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer. Here today to present the second quarter, what we sometimes call mid-year fiscal status report for fiscal year 2024-25. I will endeavor to be a little bit more abbreviated than I might normally be, understanding that we're running a bit behind schedule, but I did want to start off just acknowledging, like most times when I am up here, I'm here to talk about work that a lot of other people have done. So I want to thank the fiscal teams in the departments and my team in the Office of Budget and Debt Management for preparing and analyzing these estimates that I will be talking about today. So to start off, just as an overview, I am going to be talking about estimated revenues and expenditures for this current year, current fiscal year 24-25. That's based on actual data available as of December of 2024 and any other information available as of January of this year. As you'll see, overall, expenditures in most departments are estimated to be lower than budgeted. And then I will discuss later, there are certain budget units that require appropriation adjustments to increase or transfer appropriations in order to be able to cover estimated expenditures. Discretionary revenues in the general fund are estimated to be higher than budgeted, but I'll note that this is largely due to a one-time adjustment, which I'll discuss more later. So overall, in the general fund, those higher revenues and lower expenditures result in an estimated $71 million available fund balance carryforward for the '25-'26 budget. So this is probably where I'm going to spend the most time talking today. I'm going to talk a little bit more later about how we came up with that $71 million, but I think this chart helps put that number in context. And I know you've seen this before, but just as a refresher, the top of the bar here is showing us the total amount of beginning general fund fund balance available in that year's budget. The blue part of the bar is showing how much of that amount we use to fund appropriations in the budget, and then the orange part is showing how much was set aside in reserves. So as we've talked about before, and as you can see here, during the COVID years, we saw really unusually high levels of fund balance due to a variety of factors. And the good news is that during that time, if you know, if you look at that orange, we were able to set aside quite a bit in reserves. So that's the good news. The bad news is that we also, you know, looking at these numbers, became overly reliant on fund balance, which is really a one-time funding source, to fund expenditures, which sort of continued and exacerbated a structural imbalance we have in our budget. So if you look at that $71 million, which is this gray bar here, available for '25-'26, you can see that it's significantly less, obviously, than those really high years, but also less than the $112 million that was available for this current fiscal year, of which about $80 million is funding ongoing expenditures in this year's budget. So creating a gap in funding both of ongoing expenditures and also impacting the ability to continue to fund one-time expenditures. Okay, so the next several slides are really just going to detail the estimates of revenues and expenditures that get us to that $71 million estimate for general fund fund balance. Discretionary revenue, as I mentioned, is estimated to be higher than budgeted, about $25 million in total. I won't go through all these bullets, I think the important point to note is that really the largest contribution is our sales and use tax revenues, which are estimating to be 18 million higher, and that is largely due to a one-time adjustment resulting from an underaccrual of prior year sales tax revenues. So I think the important thing to note is not that ongoing revenues are performing a lot better than we thought, it's mostly that we have this one-time adjustment that is contributing to an increase.
How did we underaccrue?
So, so the, our sales tax revenues are earned in the fiscal year that ends June 30th, but they actually come in in the subsequent three months.
It's a structural thing.
Exactly, yeah. So we had to have to come up with an estimate, and that estimate understood it.
Got you.
Yep. Good question. Okay. So turning to look at semi-discretionary revenue, which is another large category of funding in the general fund, so this is our realignment and Proposition 172 revenue, which are largely based on statewide sales taxes. Overall, we have about a $14 million increase, but I think it's important to note that that's, that's the net result of a $15.7 million increase in our non-COWWorks-related reimbursements, which really don't impact the use of discretionary resources. And then we have about a $1.4 million decrease in all other reimbursements, which do impact the use of discretionary resources. And that, that decrease is resulting from a combination of lower estimated expenditures in some categories and lower available revenues in others, really as we've seen statewide sales tax revenues perform below expectations. So the, the third thing that we look at is sort of what, what the net financing uses in general fund departments are. And that is a function of expenditures in those departments and then offset by departmental revenues and reimbursements. So looking at the net result of all of that, we see a $23 million decrease in the net departmental expenditures funded with discretionary and semi-discretionary resources. So overall, lower expenditures in departments, partially offset by lower revenues and reimbursements in departments, but a reduced need overall of $23 million compared to budget. So the math of that is that we have a $25 million increase in discretionary revenue, a $14 million increase in semi-discretionary reimbursements, that $23 million decrease in the use of those discretionary and semi-discretionary resources. So that results in a $60 million, $62 million estimate of fund balance as of the second quarter. But as we know, that estimate historically has understated what the actual fund balance ends up being, so we're adding in a 15% adjustment here to account for that historical difference, with the result being the $71 million estimate, which would be available for the '25-'26 budget. In addition to the estimates that I just described, the other, you know, the other, or the action that we're asking for today and the other part of this mid-year review process is to look at budget adjustments that are required at this time. And so as I noted earlier, most departments anticipate having more than sufficient budget appropriations to cover expenditures, but there are some budget units where adjustments are needed. I'm not intending to go over each of these individually, but I'll just note that those that are listed under the first main bullet are funded either by additional revenue or a budget transfer, so there's no impact on the use of discretionary resources for these adjustments. And then for those that are listed under the second bullet, those do impact the use of discretionary resources, with a net kind of of all of these changes resulting in a use of general fund contingency of approximately $2.3 million, which would leave a contingency balance of approximately $4.8 million after these adjustments. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you. I have a question, and maybe... I have a question, and maybe I'm asking it the wrong way, but I'll ask it anyways. So if we have, if we're looking today at an estimated $71 million fund balance, if we were to apply as a matter of what we have set in policy, the percentage for reserve and for contingency, what is that, what is that, how do I think, how do we think about that today as a starting place relative to the 71 million?
Sure. So the 71 million is obviously only one piece of the budget picture. When we look at our reserve and contingency policies, they don't actually speak to fund balance, or a reserve policy looks at first maintaining a minimum percentage of our discretionary revenues, you know, in our general reserve, and then overall establishing a target that's based on total general fund revenues. So while fund balance becomes an available source for those reserves.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, I'm referring back to your bar chart, because maybe it's not in the policy, but historically, that's where we have looked for both appropriations and reserve.
Exactly.
But, and in earlier years, we didn't really have a contingency policy, so that's why I'm asking that, let's say we all approach this from a hyper-conservative perspective, when I say this, I mean the recommended budget, and we start from a place of what do we think, what are the minimums that we should be having in the back of our minds about the minimum percentages that we ought to prioritize, and if necessary, prioritize from fund balance?
Yes, so I think probably a useful way to think about it is because we know that this fund balance is one-time funding. Ideally, 100% of it would be used either for reserves or one-time expenditures. I think, I think as we've known and talked about, it's going to take the county some time before we can get there, right? If we think about, you know, $80 million is funding ongoing expenditures this year, you know, we really need to, we need to continue to sort of manage that down. Doing that all in one year obviously would be very impactful.
Mr. Villanueva.
Supervisor, I think what you're asking for is the policy as we run into the September budget, where we actually are, the policy actually says for us to sit, set aside a certain percentage of our fund balance, and maybe Amanda can talk on that.
Right, so when we, when we come in June with recommendations, you know, what we typically have done in the past is we have also identified some growth that might be prioritized for funding in September, should we have additional fund balance.
And some of it's mandatory.
Right, and then, and then what the policy says is any fund balance beyond that, we should put in reserves. So thank you, David.
Got you. All right, questions for Amanda? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
We do not.
I don't know why Siri thinks it's time to.
Let's start it.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Please vote.
And that must she does pass.
All right, very good. Next item.
Item number 40 is county executive comments.
Thank you, Nicole. If I could ask Metro Cable to put up the picture. Today, we've had a lot of discussions about the homeless and the, and the services that we provide at the homeless, and I think Supervisor Serna made a good point to recognize our PAWS, our PAWS Mobile, which is our pet aid and wellness center. Well, this year, we were celebrating its one-year anniversary. We actually started it back in about December, but Dr. Midcalf has done a wonderful job getting out there and providing these services. You know, PAWS is a full-service veterinary outreach clinic on wheels dedicated purely to the unhoused and providing services to the animals and the pets of the unhoused community residents. Services provided by PAWS includes spay and neuter surgeries, medical treatment and testing, vaccines and preventative care, microchipping, and they also have leashes and food and a whole host of pet pantry and supplies. This year, they were able to do about 1,500 exams, spay and neuter almost 500 animals, and then also provide 11,000 wellness services and vaccines. As I look at this picture earlier, I was noticing this is the Florin Road Safe Stay. I can, I can see that, and so they do, do spend time at the safe stays along the river, also the bike trail, American River, and a whole host of other pre-designated areas, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to also work with the medical, medical staff. You know, Dr. Midcalf, I had the opportunity to sit with her last Wednesday at a fundraiser and a celebration event with, with this, and she is just incredibly dedicated to this work and especially the animals for the homeless and the unhoused. But I just really appreciate her work and her dedication to it, so I wanted to thank her on that. On top of that, if Nicole can put that up, we, we are coming forward with our 2024 year in review today. This is our award-winning annual report that we, has a whole host of stats, of facts and figures for all our county departments, including property tax dollars, median income, housing value, and age of our population, and much, much more. Some key statistics that I would just point out in there is in 20, since 2015, we've reduced our, our use in foster care by about 58%. Child Support Services has collected about $129 million last year, preventing children and families from falling into poverty, and transportation has filled almost 91,000 potholes and removed almost 132,000 square feet of graffiti. So I think this is a great thing, you should already, if it's not already in your office, they will be in your office for you to share with your community, and we've also sent them to the other counties to boast about all the great work that Sacramento County is doing. So thank you to everybody on the team. I couldn't do it without the team behind me. I have an excellent executive team, and our department heads are fantastic, so thank you for the time.
And hopefully, you're going to send that to CSAC, right?
We are sending it to everybody.
Comments from my colleagues? All right, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank, you know, David, thank your staff and all of the, those that came out for the neighborhood cleanup down in South Sacramento about 10 days ago. It was a tremendous success. It's kind of funny, all these people coming up with, you know, trailers full of garbage and, and it's not usable stuff, and thanking us. And, you know, I want to quit the, thank you, because we realize that had you not brought it here, you'd be dumping it somewhere else, so. But it was a huge success, but I particularly want to call out, I mean, Barry Chamberlain and his staff, they were all out in full force, even some of them had their kids volunteering, not sure how legal that is. But, you know, they were great. And then I want to give a special shout out, too, because way above and beyond was Troy Givens. That guy worked his butt off that day, and is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Senator Ashby, Sacramento County, has a bill, Senate Bill 8, that would codify a temporary disability benefit for park ranger peace officers, like our own park ranger officers here. And, Mr. Chair, I'd request that this be agendized for us to get a presentation about that legislation and for us to consider supporting it as a county. My understanding is that is actually a temporary disability benefit that we provide as part of the contract for our peace officer rangers, but I'd like to explore actually supporting the legislation.
That's something that certainly we can do. What I, if you wouldn't mind a friendly suggestion, is I would encourage, in the spirit of exploration about what the bill entails, having our, bless you, our county CEO, perhaps alongside those that are involved here on our legislative agenda, maybe schedule one-on-one meetings with supervisors to have a conversation about kind of the details, because I'm hearing different things about it, and I want us to make, if we're going to make a decision about it, to make an informed one. So I'm not sure if that's what you were suggesting or, or not, but I would have us kind of go through that exercise first, if that's something you're agreeable to.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't want that to, I still keep my request that this eventually come back to the board for consideration. I know we're going to, it comes, the legislation goes to its first committee hearing, I think, tomorrow. I don't know when it would, would come to the floor, so we certainly have enough time to do that. So I'm, I'm certainly fine with that, but my request remains that this come back for the board to decide whether we would like to endorse it officially or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, I want to wish the best of luck to District 4 resident Julian Jimenez, who, as he continues his Food Network battle. We're excited to see him represent the Sacramento region and showcase his culinary talents on the national stage. As of last night, Julian, who owns Julian's Pass Pâtisserie and Cafe, is still running for the Food Network Spring Baking Championship. Then I want to give a big thank you to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office and deputies for their successful human trafficking sting operation last Friday night. By working undercover and posing as sex workers, they took action in the Watt Avenue area, which has been a long hotspot for these crimes. Their dedication to protecting our community is truly appreciated. And in honor of Women's History Month, I have a couple of recognitions. One is having founded over 474 free public libraries and 4,655 traveling libraries. Women's clubs were accredited by the American Library Association with establishing 75% of America's public libraries. Supporting local libraries continues to be the Federation's priority today. Also recognize Darcy Brewer, the CEO, and Angela Terry, the COO of the California Capital Show. These two ladies have done a remarkable job managing the air show and all of the intricate details that go into the planning of the event. And also give a shout out to one of my best friends, who, Stacy Patterson, who will be retiring after 34 years in law enforcement, and of those 21 she has spent with Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. So congratulations on your retirement, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question that I initially thought was going to be directed towards Deputy Executive Jones, but in speaking with him, because it is existing litigation, I should direct it to county council. I received a phone call about, I guess there was a hearing the other day on status of May's consent, for lack of a better term, and apparently the judge expressed some frustration or annoyance over the lack of definitive timeline for solutions, and set some sort of deadline coming up in June, as I understand it, where there's more clarity to be provided. And so I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, do we need to do something proactively as a board in order to move up the timeline that CGL gave us, I think it was a year and a half to two years, to go through the process to identify preferred solutions? Do we need to do anything in order to be a little more proactive?
Sure, I can address that. And since, as you recognize, this is existing litigation, I'll just give you a high-level report, and we will be scheduling something for a closed session to give you more detailed analysis of the status conferences. As you recognize, the judge has scheduled two, twice yearly status conferences, and we did have one last Thursday, and you did use the correct adjective, concern, dismay at the lack of progress for the, the health facility. So she did set another interim status conference for June 23rd, in which she requested a timeline, a definitive timeline for how we are going to address that facility. It is my understanding that my office is meeting with the deputy county executives today to present a timeline, to figure out how to meet those deadlines. I don't think at this time, there's anything that the board needs to do, since it was just last Thursday, we're really in the planning stages and understand that this needs to happen, and we have every intention of doing so. So I don't think the board needs to do anything at this time. We're figuring out how we will do that and have every intention of doing so.
Okay, great, thank you, and I look forward to that closed session. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of things. First, I want to join Supervisor Rodriguez in thanking Darcy Brewer and Angela Terry, as was mentioned, terrific Capitol, California Capitol Air Show, featuring the Blue Angels exhibition team and many others, including the Warbirds, both static and fly-by performers. It was just great weather, and I had the unique opportunity to be out there all three days. And in addition to Darcy and Angelo, Angela, I want to thank the sponsors. I want to thank Cindy Nickel, her staff, and the entire airport system. They are a major player in making sure that that is a successful air show every year. I want to thank the army of volunteers that pull off the air show and do so, giving up their time and energy so freely. I want to thank the first responders that were there to make sure we had a safe experience, and we all look forward to, to next year. But this year was very special, we had it in the spring. It's not the first time, but it's been the first time in a while, and I thought it went great, better than expected, quite frankly. And the second item I have, I need my short-timer chief of staff, Lisa Nava, to join me at the podium.
They should go to the rest of the team, honestly.
So I think everyone here is aware that after, what, nearly 12 years?
Yeah.
Yep, my chief of staff, my very capable, skilled, talented veteran chief of staff, Lisa Nava, is going to be leaving the District 1 office and is going to be serving as Mayor Ricardi's chief of staff. It's a return for her. She, previous to working with us and our team here in District 1, worked with then Councilmember Rob Fong, so she's returning to some familiar, a familiar environment, and I'm sure she will, you know, excel just as, as well as she, she has here. She's been just an incredible partner to work with over these years, and certainly has kept me checked when I need to be checked, and just does a wonderful job of managing our limited human resources, but again, very capable. Human Resources, our friends, Monica, Mr. Chong, as she likes to say, and Lydia Fraser, who couldn't be here today, but I just wanted to make sure she understood how much I've appreciated that partnership and the experience working with you over these years. You've made a difference to me, but more importantly, you've made a difference to our constituents who really lean on our office, not daily, but hourly, and, you know, doing, performing the, the art and science of directing constituent concerns to the appropriate resources is a very unique thing, and she does it very, very skillfully. So we all wish you the best in your, your new capacity, working for the mayor, and I think what we get out of it is we get to have that remaining connection there, and we've talked a lot today about our partnership with the city, and so this is kind of one more extension of that, but thank you for everything you've done.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Phil. Very sweet of you.
Get this out of your face.
I'm going to enjoy looking at that. I'm horrible with plants and trees, as the floor can tell you, they're beautiful. Thank you, I did not expect this. I'm a little overwhelmed. I've really enjoyed working here, and thank you, Phil, for giving me the opportunity. If I never did that, I would have never had the pleasure of meeting all of you and working with you. It's just, it feels like a family, so I'm really going to be bummed to leave you. I'm just going down the streets, so I hope to bump into you. And yes, you will always have a friendly face in the mayor's office, so just give me some time. It's going to take some time to get my feet under me. The city's changed a lot, I still have some old friends there, so I'm looking forward to reconnecting, but I will really miss you all, and I can't even tell you the side of the table, your expertise and your staff have been tremendous. So we couldn't do what we do without your help. So thank you, thank you, thank you. This isn't goodbye, it's just I'll run into you. So, and you all have my cell phone, I'm not going to list it on this, on air TV, but you all have it, so reach out anytime, and I'm there. So thank you, appreciate it. Can I get a picture with Monica and Aaron, too? Can I get a picture with Monica and you?
Hey, Lisa, first of all, it's 916.
Only you would do that.
But, but all I say is, it's been a huge pleasure working with you. We've been friends long before, but don't forget from where you came.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. This thing's taller than me. And then you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have to get a cardboard cutout of Lydia.
Yeah.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
And I just want to take a minute and also note that I'm also fortunate that Alma Munoz has accepted an offer to serve as my next Chief of Staff, and so I'm looking forward to that. We all know Alma. And, and I can't wait to get to work with Alma, and I spoke to her earlier today, I said, is it okay if I mention this? She goes, well, sewer district doesn't even know. So Kristoff, if you're watching. But no, in all seriousness, I'm really blessed to have worked with some, some great chiefs, and Lisa's been the longest-tenured, and I look forward to the next chapter of District 1 with Alma. So thank you. All right. If there is no further business, before this board, we are adjourned. Yep.